Good afternoon. I'll call the meeting to order for the March 26, 2019 study session, Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon has an excused absence.
Thank you. First item of current business, we -- study session item number one. We'll clarify items on the consent calendar. Any questions from the dais? Mr. Avery? Mr. Duffield? Ms. Brenner?
I'd like a little bit of discussion about what our homeless task force will be, how that will function and...
Would you like to discuss that now?
Anytime.
Okay. All right. Well, happy to do that. And while we continue to ask if there's any other questions. Mr. Herdman, did you have anything? Mayor Protam?
And I have none. I will open up that good question. And I have asked Mr. O'Neal, Mayor Protam O'Neal and Mr. Avery to serve on our homeless newly formed, to be formed this evening, task force, assuming the council approves it. And we'll have seven members of the community may apply to serve. As we all know homelessness is an indelible issue in our county and throughout the country, actually. And as I'm sure many of you are familiar with recent actions by Judge Carter, the Orange County Board of Supervisors and various cities in Orange County are taking aggressive steps to deal with homelessness in a compassionate and humane way. And your city is no different. So what I have asked Mayor Protam O'Neal to do and Mr. Avery is to lead us, community-based task force, so the community is involved in how we go about dealing. I don't think we'll solve it, but we certainly will attempt as a city to deal with our homeless population, which is about, at latest count, actually, I don't know if it's, this is a 2018 number, is about 80 individuals. So the good news is, as many of you may know, at our last meeting, the city signed a five-year contract with CityNet, which is a social services agency, independent nonprofit agency that is working with our police department and engaging with our homeless. I call it homeless one person at a time, which is, we are very fortunate, we can do that. And CityNet is helping provide those transitory intermittent services to help the homeless person get into temporary, then permanent, and necessary medical care if appropriate. So I'll briefly turn it over to Mayor Protam if you have any thoughts on how you see the task force proceeding.
Maybe it's easier, what's the, is it just a broad question of what the thought is?
I just generally wanted to know. I basically wanted to know how we were going to utilize consultant services or people that if we get just general citizens on the task force, they may not have as much expertise as a consultant might, or we don't need to reinvent the wheel. So I guess I was looking at how we were going to utilize expertise in that field.
Okay. Mr. Herdman, did you have a...
Well, I don't know if this is the time to do it or not. There's a couple of things I'd like to see added to it, to the attachment, eh?
Well, what I would suggest is...
Shall I pull it?
Yes, later on this evening. Why don't you pull it and we can continue work through. But for general purposes, Mr. O'Neal, why don't you just explain what your thoughts are for the formation of the task force?
Yep. So we'll be using CityNet certainly as a consultant. We already do as a city, so the, what we would be, what we'd be using, what we'd be doing, this task force is a lot more front-facing. What we've been doing is, a lot of staff time, a lot of folks on our staff have been working regionally and then locally. And the idea now is join alongside a lot of the other cities that we've been, that have, because of either legal reasons or otherwise, have gotten way more public about exactly what they've been working on and how to work within the frameworks, because there's a lot of new work that's being done. We'd like to join them. And so part of that process is going to be bringing in seven folks who are pretty well-qualified. And I've actually met quite a few people in our community who have already expressed an interest in joining that are really well-qualified. And so the idea will be not just the seven public members and two council members, but we would also be including folks who are on staff already, and then we would invite our consultants as well. So yes, we would, we'll be using, it's, there's no make-work in this assignment. No, we don't have time for that. Anyway, thank you for asking that.
Is that okay? Thank you. Anything else? All right. First item, second item, study session item, public advisory and informational presentation on the Asian citrus psyllid and HLB disease. I thought I'd use the initials there.
That is. And thank you, Mayor. This is an interesting topic, not one we see often, but we have a public advisory notice today. Today, we have a few folks with us. Victoria Horn, Baker's right in front. She's with the California Department of Food and Agriculture. She's the interim director. We'll be talking about this. And with her also is Jeff Croy. He's with the County of Orange. He's one of our agricultural commissioners. And Michael Kulis is one of their communication experts that's helping discuss this topic tonight. So they want to give you a public advisory and also discuss that we have a quarantine now coming in Orange County, and we actually have a portion that quarantine in our city. So they're going to give you a topic on that. Victoria, if you'd like to start, and the clicker's on there, you just press it through your PowerPoint.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, thank you very much for allowing us to come here today and share some information with you on Asian citrus psyllid and Wong Long Bing, or HLB. I've had a lot of practice saying it, so...
Thank you. You just taught me.
There we go. So essentially, what's the issue? Asian citrus psyllid has been found throughout California. Southern California area is considered generally infested. Parts of Northern California and the Central Valley, we look at them as having had some ephemeral infestations that we try to address as quickly as possible. Why do we care about this bug? If it was just any other bug, we wouldn't care about it. But this bug carries a disease. It's a vector for Candida nodus liberibacter asiaticus, the bacteria that causes Wong Long Bing. Once a citrus tree or another host plant is infected with this bacteria, it will slowly decline. There's no, at this point, no cure, although we are spending a lot of time and energy working with researchers from all around the world to try to find a cure for this disease. There is no cure. Once a citrus tree is infected, it will succumb to the disease and it will die. The unfortunate part is, while it is slowly dying, it acts as a reservoir. So any Asian citrus psyllid that feeds on that tree and flies to a healthy tree is spreading the disease. Why do we worry about that? Well, six to 10 citrus, six to 10 residents in our area has, six out of 10 has a citrus tree. I'm from Orange County originally. I grew up when we had, you know, groves of citrus, and they slowly started taking them out. But a lot of those citrus trees remain in backyards, and as Californians, we have a real love for our citrus trees. So we want to take this, you know, it's a local thing. We want to protect our own trees in our yard, our community's trees. But also, we have the largest fresh-producing citrus region in the world right now in California. Eighty percent of all fresh citrus comes from California. We have over 300,000 acres of citrus. So we want to also protect our commercial industry as well. So here's a little bit of information about Asian citrus psyllid. It looks quite large, but as you can see in the picture with the thumb, it is very small, about an eighth of an inch long. Kind of hard to see. They do have these devious little red beady eyes. If you get up really close, you can see their red beady eyes. And they do feed at a 45-degree angle. So we ask people to keep an eye out for the insect if they see it. Now, we know we have them, a lot of them here in Southern California, but we've been doing a lot of activities here, biocontrol, different things. So we've noticed that those populations are reducing, which is good news. And then, I don't know if there's a pointer, but the picture, went the wrong way. The picture that has the white stuff, that's what we call a waxy tubule. So that comes from the immature stages of the psyllid. They call them nymphs. They attach to the leaf. They form a salivary sheath that goes into the phloem, or the, kind of like the blood system of a tree, where they suck out those juices and then they release that waxy tubule. So that's another telltale sign that you might have Asian citrus psyllid on your tree. And then the disease, Wong Long Bing. Again, we care about it because it kills citrus trees. There is no cure. It is not harmful to humans or pets. So if you were to eat a piece of citrus from a tree that's infected, it probably wouldn't taste very good. That's one of the things that this disease does, is it changes the flavors in citrus. It loses the acidity. It becomes very bitter. I've tasted it in Florida. It's not palatable. And again, like I said, there's a long latency period. So you can have a tree that may look like it's healthy, but is actually slowly dying from this disease. Some of the symptoms that you can expect to see are your fruit will become asymmetrical. So instead of being nice and round, it'll be kind of misshapen. It won't color up appropriately, so it'll stay partially green against, so they call it sometimes in Florida, they call it citrus greening disease, because the citrus never colors. The leaves will be asymmetrically blotchy. So as you can see, the leaves on the picture there have those yellow blotches. The veins will harden up or become corky. And you'll, you may notice a lot of fruit dropping from your tree. So from an economic standpoint, Florida has been devastated by this disease. $7.8 billion in lost economic activity. More than 7,000 jobs have been lost. Their production is at the lowest point it's ever been. Florida has always produced more citrus than California because they're a juice state. So they're producing, they're producing fruit that doesn't have to be perfect like our California fruit, because it goes to juice. We are actually producing more cartons of citrus last year than Florida did. And that's the first time in about 10 years that we've surpassed them. So again, for California, six out of 10 residents will have a citrus tree, a lemon, a grapefruit, a mandarin, and orange. We all love our citrus trees. They're all at risk from this disease. And our $3.4 billion commercial industry, again, is at risk as well. So HLB in California. HLB was first detected in California in 2012 in the city of Hacienda Heights. And since then, we have been furiously looking for it. Our next detection wasn't until 2015 in San Gabriel. And then in 2017, we had our first detection in Orange County. To date, we're over 1,000 trees. I think our total right now is 1,166 trees in California, all in LA, Orange, and only three in Riverside County, that have been confirmed positive for HLB and have been removed. Again, because there's no cure, we need to get those trees out of the ground so they don't serve as a source of inoculum to spread the disease to other trees. We're up to 904 square miles of HLB quarantine. So what does CDFA do? If we find HLB in an area, we start going out and we survey. We're looking for symptoms. We're collecting the psyllids. All of those psyllids and all of the symptomatic plant tissue we collect go to our lab in Sacramento, California. I'm proud to say that we are only one of two certified labs to do the test for HLB in California. And my good friend is so good that she does work for USDA as well. So we have a state-of-the-art lab. We test all these things, and we find out if these psyllids are carrying the bacteria or if the trees are diseased. And again, if they're diseased, we take the trees out. And it's done at no cost to the homeowner. We remove that through our program, which is funded through an assessment on cartons of citrus. So growers give us about $15 million a year. We also receive some federal funds, and recently, we've received some general funds from the state general fund as well. So this map shows our ACP quarantine. So we have the HLB quarantine for the disease. We also have quarantines in place for the psyllid. It's important that the first thing in any IPM program you want to do is try to exclude the pest. So you don't want that pest moving. So we don't allow the movement of nursery stock that hasn't been grown in an insect-resistant structure. We don't allow fruit with stems and leaves to move out of one of these regions, because they could inadvertently be carrying the psyllid. So it's important for folks, if they're buying citrus trees, it should have a tag on there that says, "Do not move this tree from the quarantine area." Because I will tell you guys, we have actually found, in Northern California, trees from Orange County and Riverside that, you know, a homeowner moved, relocated, and unfortunately brought the trees with them and brought the psyllids to Northern California as well. And again, here's our HLB quarantine. Covers portions of LA, Orange, and a small area in Riverside County. And how this works is, if we have an HLB detection, we establish a five-mile quarantine around it. And as you can see, you know, originally, we had a five-mile quarantine in Hacienda Heights, and as we've had more detections, it's slowly expanded. So we've been monitoring this area. Again, we're out surveying, we're trapping, we're collecting psyllids, collecting plant tissue. As I stated, we do get funding from the growers, from the federal government, and from the general fund. But this is a very collaborative effort. I'm really happy to say that, for instance, Jeff and I work very closely together on this, as I do with other ag commissioners that are dealing with Wong Long Bing or Asian citrus psyllid. We all understand the importance of protecting citrus in California. Again, the citrus in our backyard, our community citrus, and our, our commercial industry as well. But we have federal participation with federal research dollars, federal money to support our program here in California. We work with the industry. We work with our citrus research board in the Central Valley. We work with researchers, again, from all over the world. This is not just a California problem. Right now, the only region of the world that does not have Asian citrus psyllid or Wong Long Bing that's a major producer is Australia. And they actually came out and met with us two weeks ago, so that they can prepare themselves for if and when they have this pest and disease in their country. So again, we do detection trapping. You might see these yellow panel traps out. We have surveyors that are going out, cutting leaves, collecting psyllids. All of that goes to our lab for analysis. And then one of the things I also want to talk about is, we do have a very robust biocontrol program. We partnered with UC Riverside. They went out and did some foreign exploration, and they collected parasitoids that parasitized the Asian citrus psyllid from the Punjab region of Pakistan. They brought those back. They were in quarantine for two years. Now, CDFA, we have two rearing facilities. We have a facility in Riverside, and we have a facility at Cal Poly Pomona. We are rearing and releasing over 3,000 of these tiny little predators throughout Southern California. And now, we're starting to release them when we have these limited infestations in Northern California and Central Valley. They're not a silver bullet, but it is part of our IPM program. It helps reduce the number and population of Asian citrus psyllid. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Jeff Croy. I'm the Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures. And the first thing I want to mention is what the trap is like that is used. It is a blunder trap that the state puts out. It's bright yellow. There is no pesticide on this. Literally, the insects just fly into here, and they're analyzed at a lab to determine if there's any Asian citrus psyllids and if they have the disease. So if you see these in the trees, it's because they're looking for the psyllids. The role of my office involves agriculture, weights, and measures, and pesticide enforcement. We actually have inspectors going throughout the county to shipping and receiving facilities, FedEx, UPS, John Wayne Airport. Anywhere plants or products are brought into this county, we inspect it for biological control, check for invasive species such as psyllids. Efforts that are being used to control the spread of the psyllids, they're even netting some of the farmers' markets, so that the produce that moves out of the quarantine area does not contain psyllids. Also, part of my office is the pesticide enforcement, where we monitor the applications of pesticides, including the pesticides that will be applied by the state personnel. Typically, when pesticides are applied, especially at a school, we will have a member from my office there to witness it.
Hi, again, Michael Kulis. I'm with the Citrus Pest and Disease Prevention Program, and we're supporting the efforts of CDFA in getting the word out on this. Now that we've provided you all this information, we do have a request. We'd love for you to partner with us to help get the word out to your community. If you are interested in sending notification letters, we can provide you with that information. We have a host of collateral material. There are some websites that are dedicated to this issue, Californycitrusthreat.org. Again, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through all of these, but these are the key message points. It's basically for the community to work with us to contain this problem. And then the collateral materials, we can send you, we have a large variety. We have them in several languages. If you let me know what you would need, if you want to hand them out at public meetings, town halls, any sort of events, we can ship those in any, you know, whatever quantity you need. And again, there's just the information for folks. If they believe they have the psyllid or HLB tree, they can contact CDFA or Jeff's office. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. Very informative. Just a couple of questions come to mind, and I'm sure my colleagues may have some others. But first of all, yes, I think we definitely want to assist in communicating and getting the word out. All of these global efforts to study in the laboratory, and Victoria mentioned that there's no cure, there's no eradication prospect in sight. That's unfortunate.
Yeah. So I actually was just at the sixth international HLB conference, was in Riverside two weeks ago. And I was there and met with the same folks I've met with on the fifth and the fourth conference that we had in Florida. And there's a lot of really interesting work. There's work on amending the psyllid so that it can't spread the disease. We've had, for instance, with medfly, they release sterile medflies. And they will breed with the wild medfly and basically breed them out of existence, because they don't produce any viable eggs. We would like to do something similar with Asian citrus psyllid. Unfortunately, it spreads the disease. So we need to sterilize it and do something to where it can't spread the disease. So there's researchers working on that. My good friend, Michelle Sillia at Cornell University, is working on that. We're working on detection technologies that would find the disease sooner, so that it wouldn't be sitting there allowing psyllids to feed on it. For instance, we were here in Garden Grove in Santa Ana end of February with detector dogs from Florida that they've been working with that can smell the bacteria in the tree. So we're working with them on that. There's discussions on finding resistant and tolerant varieties of citrus that you could plant in the environment where you have HLB and the trees would still flourish. Then there's a lot of really novel things, like using CRISPR technology to edit genes and do different things to prevent the disease from taking a hold in the tree. So there's a lot of interesting work going on. Unfortunately, it takes a long time. So we haven't gotten to a point where we can say, we've got, what a researcher said is, "We're in the tunnel. We just can't see the light yet."
Well, I commend all those efforts. It's just unfortunate. How does this enter into the country? I think, I thought we had all these controls and customs and plans get scrutinized. How'd they get in?
Yeah. You know, the interesting thing is, we think the first HLB tree that we detected in Hacienda Heights was a gentleman who was working with his church group and had traveled abroad and cut some bud sticks, because you can bud onto citrus trees, of some novel pomelo varieties, and brought them back and grafted them onto a lemon tree, and those bud sticks contained the bacteria.
You were able to go to the source like that?
Yeah.
Interesting. Mr. Herdman, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just curious if Orange County Vector Control is helping you out in any way.
Jeff, are you working with Vector Control? I mean, they're mostly mosquito and...
Yeah.
Right.
Vector Control is the mosquito and health issues with humans. Since this is agriculture-related, this falls under California Department of Food and Agriculture.
Ms. Brenner?
What are citizens supposed to do if they see evidence of this?
So if somebody sees the symptom, what they think are the symptoms of the disease, we know that we have ACP in this area. But if they see the symptoms of what these symptoms, they think the symptoms are of HLB, call the 1-800 number, 1-800-491-1899, our number, or call Jeff's office. And one of us will get an inspector out to take samples of the tree, so that we can see if it's got the bacteria.
And we will, for our public information, folks are here. Sure, we will step up our communication. Mr. Avery?
So thus far, there's been no, none found in the coastal regions?
I think the furthest south we've found it is Huntington Beach.
Huntington Beach, that is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Garden Grove has, I'm from Garden Grove, and I have to say, we've had the most detections of HLB in my old hometown, and it's distressing to me, because it's like, "Come on, folks. You're my people. Don't do this." So we've had quite a few detections in Orange County, over 600 HLB detections this year in Orange County.
Which countries are they prevalent in?
In the countries? Oh, boy. So China, China at one point relocated their whole citrus industry from one part of the country to another. But now, they've got Asian citrus psyllid and Wong Long Bing in the new region. Brazil, Mexico, of course, Florida has been devastated. Texas has it. They have HLB in Guam. They have the psyllid, but not HLB in Hawaii. They don't have a major citrus production there. They do not have the disease in Arizona yet. So Arizona is our last real citrus-producing region of the US that does not have Wong Long Bing. Again, the only major production area, so it's all over in Central America. I was just in Spain in the summer, working with them to develop a program for their industry, but they don't have Asian citrus psyllid. They have Triosa, which is the African psyllid. So they have a different psyllid, but it still spreads the disease. So I was working with them. But yeah, Australia and New Zealand are the only two areas right now that are ACP and HLB-free.
Wow. Any success stories? In terms of, you said China moved their whole, that's pretty drastic.
Brazil has had some success in areas where they have large citrus production. They go out and take out all of the residential trees, and they rogue out trees based just on symptoms. So if it looks like it's not doing well, they just take that tree out. I would say California's a success story, although we've had over 1,100 trees taken out. We have had psyllids since 2008, and we have not found HLB in our commercial production. In Florida, they had the psyllid in '95, and it was spread throughout, the disease was spread throughout the whole state by 2004. So I think we're doing a good job. Our nursery industry is really behind us on this. They're doing everything they can do to protect and make sure that they're putting out clean nursery stock. Our commercial industry is supportive. And so, you know, for the most part, our residents in California are very supportive, because citrus is a very iconic fruit. It's part of our California history.
Thank you.
Phone number, you want to repeat it?
Sure, sure. So that's 1-800-491-1899.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenner?
Do you, by chance, have any sort of a short video that we could show on Newport Beach Television about this?
We do have a PSA. It's a very short 30-second PSA that Michael can provide. We also have some YouTube videos that we've done on what a resident can expect if CDFA is going to inspect their citrus trees. So we do have some things that Michael can provide.
That would be great.
Very good. Mr. Herdman?
No.
All right. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And special thanks to Victoria Hornbecker, who flew down from Sacramento for tonight's presentation.
She's clearly well-informed. We're very appreciative. So thank you, and safe travels back. Any questions from the public? Please come forward. See none. Mr. Webb? Oh, wait, excuse me. We have one. Yes, please.
Okay. Well, I had a major comment, but since it's questions...
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Vanessa Handy Armstrong. I came for the pesticide thing afterwards and saw that this was on the agenda. So I reached out to some experts that have some alternatives to this. My question is, I guess what I'm going to say is, massive spraying and treatment will do not work in Florida. There's been evidence of this, because of the desperation to find some other approach, which includes the recent development of the federal government's approving mass spraying of antibiotics in citrus orchards for the disease. Growers are trying antibiotics, because pesticides aren't working. So my question is, and I'm sorry, an independent study showed that what works is eliminating synthetic fertilizers and insecticides and improving microbial life in the soil, and thus improving plant health to fight disease. So my question is, why is this alternative approach not being considered? And what evidence does the CDFA to ensure us residents that the massive spraying, which will be done, which has kind of been left out of this presentation, that it will, spraying will occur on our private properties? that it will, spraying will occur on our private properties, what, how will this reach your desired outcome? If it didn't work in Florida, how is it going to work here? And also, the, so that's my first question. Second question is that the products you're applying and that we'll be applying on our private properties are known to cause genetic damage, reduce newborn survival, birth defects, miscarriages, and among other health effects. And these pesticides are toxic to bees and are also suspected of the potential contamination of groundwater. So my question is, why is this program in a tunnel vision considering the harmful effects that these products can impose on the beneficial insects and human health?
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Please come forward. Please come forward. If there are any other folks, just please come forward and be prepared to step up.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Halal, and I too just learned about this part of the presentation. I came to talk about the IPM. But I brought you all copies of the National Academy's press, their executive summary on the Florida efforts towards citrus screening. It is a very grave issue. There used to be 6,000 independent citrus farmers, now it's down to 1,200 in Florida. So it's a very important issue indeed. But the problem is, they don't know what the solution is. They spent $540 million in Florida, and they did not have any results that were conclusively successful. What's more, inside the belly of the psyllid, they have not been able to find the bacteria that they claim is causing the disease. So there's something that scientists use. I brought copies for you. It's called Koch's postulates. And it's a four-step procedure where they determine scientifically if a certain bacteria or pathogen is linked to a problem in plants or animals. And they only have the, number one, they haven't been able to reproduce the bacteria independently. They haven't found the bacteria in the psyllis bug. They don't know for sure if that's the cause of it. And what's more, that both their massive treatments of antibiotic spraying and the pesticides they're using have not been proven successful. So I know you just heard that, and I'll leave it at that. But I have copies of these handouts if you'd like--
The city attorney will help you there. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Or did you want to just, okay. Any more public comments? Mr. Webb, do we want to address one of the questions about the aerial spraying?
Actually, I don't have any information on any aerial spraying and don't know that. But I think we can give the information on our website, and they can contact the state on that if they are concerned further.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down here and communicating with our community. Thank you so much. All right. In the same category of pest management, we'll be talking about the city's integrated pest management policy. Mr. Webb?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council members, interesting topics we've had. And I would like to bring the attention to another policy and plan that we have in our maintenance shops that we use on a daily basis. But tonight, we wanted to give you some education on this. Over the last years, we've had various people calling and concerned about how we spray, maybe where we spray, not understanding our program. I've had people talk to me about Roundup and blanket spraying parks and various applications. And I find there's a lack of education. So tonight, we want to obviously give the council and the community some background on our integrated pest management plan. And we can answer any questions if you'd like. With us tonight, Micah Martin will be giving the presentation. He's our deputy director of public works. And also Dan Serino, our landscape manager, is joining us. Maybe for the last time, by the way, Dan will be retiring at this end of the month. I wanted to announce that for you, Dan. But we're very thankful we've had Dan for these times. He's very knowledgeable in this topic, and we're happy he's here tonight to help us. So gentlemen--
Maybe you shouldn't go so fast. We've got-- [laughing] Micah, please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. As Dave mentioned, we're just going to review our integrated pest management program tonight. So I'm just going to take you a little walk through our program and what it addresses and some of the issues that we come across here. So first of all, what is an integrated pest management program? It's a program designed to manage our pest control population, whether it be through insecticides, pesticides, other means. It's very comprehensive, very thorough. We try to manage pests and vegetation in the most economical means with the least possible hazard to people, property, and the environment. These are just the different categories of pest control, herbicides, insect, you can see there's a lot of insects that we battle here in Newport Beach, these weeds under the herbicides category. These are all, you know, specific to this Newport Beach area. These are the things we come in contact with on a regular basis that we have to control and manage. It's an example of what an implemented integrated pest management program looks like, all the different categories there that are covered under that. Here's our integrated pest management program at work. This is a flyer that we've produced and put out to the public to make them aware of a magnolia tree pest alert. There's a disease that's infecting some of our magnolia trees in our community. And we want to make sure that our IPM program is implemented and put into practice, not just for us, but for the public as well. So there's just an example of that, of how that program looks when it's put into action. This is just a quick look at some of the weeds that we come in contact with on a regular basis. And that's kind of where we're going to spend our time tonight, is talking a little bit more about weed control. Pest management covers all different kinds of pests, but weeds is a topic of discussion here tonight. So these here are just examples of all the different kinds of weeds that we come across and have to manage, everything from perennials to annuals to invasives to noxious weeds. It's all here. First question is, why do we abate weeds? Why are weeds considered a pest? You know, they're not insects. They're things, you know, that are a little bit different. But weeds are considered a pest because they're invasive in this problem that they create in our natural areas. There's hazard mitigation that's related to that. You know, we get a lot of overgrown brush that dies off and can create a fire hazard. We have to manage that for safety purposes for a fire hazard. There's a threat to our natural habitat. We have natural habitat that we need to preserve in a lot of our preservation areas. And we have to keep invasive weeds out of those areas to preserve and maintain that habitat. It could overtake our ornamental plants and turf. We spend a lot of money on landscaping, to beautify landscaping, make it look nice. Invasive weeds can overtake those areas and kill off those plants and cause other problems with that. There's safety concerns on playing fields and sports turf, with fields of play for soccer fields and baseball fields. It's, there's an intended level of playing surface that's needed to be maintained to make it safe for the play of the ball and for the athletes. If you get a lot of clumping of weeds or divots from mechanical weed removal, it creates a safety concern. So there's some very specific type of weed management we have to do in those areas. And there's health awareness. There's allergies and sensitivities to noxious weeds. There's a lot of weeds that people could come in contact with that they could break out and have allergic reactions to. So we're very cautious and cognizant about that. Reduce excess pollen, pest control, and then aesthetics. Aesthetics is a category of that. We do like to have well-maintained and nice-looking landscape. That is something that comes into consideration. Here's how our IPM goes into action and gets executed. What I want to mostly focus on is our prevention methods. We take a very organic method approach to our pesticide management. And when I say organic methods, it's not so much about organic pesticides as it is organic methods of maintaining and controlling our landscape. And those prevention methods include cultural sanitation, biological, mechanical, physical, irrigation, and chemical. And you know, last on that list is chemical, because that's kind of our last priority, last tool in the toolbox, so to speak, when it comes to managing this landscaping. But Dan, I'm going to have you just elaborate a little bit more on those.
These are the physical methods that we use. Excuse me. Dan Serino, landscape manager, honorable mayor, mayor pro tem, city staff and residents and property owners of the city of Newport Beach. My name is Dan Serino. I am your landscape manager, at least for another 30 days. I didn't know that that was going to be announced tonight, but thank you for that. So what Mike is going over are all kind of the physical, we call them the cultural methods that we use, first and foremost, before we go out there and spot spray a synthetic chemical. So he went over those. Sanitation is really important for, obviously, for your equipment to not spread diseases. We already had kind of that tonight. But we do mulching. We do mechanical removal and physical removal. Mowing is a weed control method. Of course, our irrigation system is really important. We do have a computerized irrigation system with four unique weather stations that we monitor in the city of Newport Beach that pick up the microclimates in the four different areas of the city, beach, inland, and kind of mid. And so proper irrigation methods and making sure that that is maintained is very important. We also, we also test our soils for suitability and agronomic testing. We do 20 sites a year, 10 in the medians and 10 in the parks, so we can better understand our soils, because that is the root of what we do. We're farmers. We're turf farmers. We're tree farmers. We're ornamental farmers. Part of that is creating a soil profile that has a lot of organics and microbes in it. As you can see, I can go on and on, and I don't think Micah wanted me to do that. So I'll stop right now and speak when asked. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Dan. And as you can see, there's a lot of technical science behind this. And Dan has put a lot of time and effort into this program in establishing these means and methods and how we manage our pests. So most importantly, this side is really important, because, you know, we're showing here that we use a selection of organic methods first and foremost before we do any other type of chemical treatment. Again, the mechanical methods of managing these weeds, the organic fertilizer, all of our fertilizers are organic. We don't use any chemical fertilizers. We aerate, we top dress with organic amendments. All the amendments that go into the turf are all organic, no chemicals. We overseed to keep the turf lush, to keep the weeds out of that. But then we have synthetics used as a secondary means. There are times when these other methods just aren't proven well enough to manage the weed populations. So there are times on a limited basis where we do have to use some of our secondary means of chemical pest control. Our IPM is adopted out of the Orange County Drainage Area Management Plan. That's the National Pollutants Discharge Elimination System. It's our permit, under the county, we're required by that permit to have this plan. This is adopted out of their, out of their model program that they have established for municipalities to follow. So our program is under the umbrella of the county's program, and we're under their jurisdiction to have this program in place. And it's been in place since 2007. Natural Communities Coalition is a coalition, it's Irvine-based, organization consisting of wildlife agencies and public and private landowners. I mention this agency because they're in this area. They have a very thorough, very, very unique IPM program to that habitat area. And we've, our program is very similar to theirs. So the reason I'm pointing this out is, they have a program that they too like to use cost-effective, cultural, organic, and mechanical methods. They use synthetic herbicides as an option and as a tool when necessary. Our program is very similar to that. So I'm using this as a comparison. It's a very big agency, has a lot of area that they cover and manage. And our program is very similar to that.
I just want to emphasize that. That's the nature reserve of Orange County.
That's correct.
That our program is comparable--
Yes.
--in every way?
Not quite in every way, because their type of land management's a little bit more unique to ours. Ours is more municipal management. We do have some natural reserve areas that we are responsible for maintaining. But with regards to the organic methods, and then the pesticide as a secondary means, that's all in relation to that, yes.
Are these county standards, minimum standards, or, and we would, and municipalities are free to exceed them in some way, or?
Yes. And we've exceeded ours. You know, we go above and beyond the minimal efforts of what's required by state and federal agencies, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then this program is also endorsed by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So those are state and federal agencies that regulate this and approve this program. Irvine Ranch Conservancy, that's another area and an agency that benefits from this type of IPM program. And what they've noticed, you know, seed of Irvine did go completely organics with all of their pesticides. They're pesticide-free with regards to chemical pesticides. And what they've shared with us is that, in their experience over the last three years, the work they do in Irvine, they're showing a cost that's five times higher in the open space. And their level of success is lower even at that higher cost. So they're spending--
What is success?
So the amount of success they have in keeping the invasive weeds and plants manageable. So they're having a lot of difficulty with that. And to the level that it needs to be at, they're experiencing five times higher cost, and the level of success is not at the level they have preferred to be. Now, they do have other areas that they manage that are outside of Irvine's area. And they continue to use that essence of their IPM to add that many tools in the toolbox and to use those chemical pesticides as needed. And this program, again, has letters of endorsement by the state and federal wildlife agencies who oversee the permit. This is just, you know, letters from these agencies, the California Natural Plant Society and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. They endorse this program. They mentioned in these letters that there's a cause for concerns for eliminating synthetics completely because of the need to protect natural habitat. So now I just want to talk a little bit more about City Newport Beach, and bring it back here to what we do. And just take a look at what our current state of our city landscape looks like under this program. So this here, you recognize this, this is the turf outside our civic center. It's considered what we call a passive park, meaning that it's just an area where people could walk through and walk their dogs and spend time there. But it's not really a park that receives programming with regards to sporting events and those other types of activities. So that's why it's considered a passive park. But you can see here, there's dead spots, there's divots, there's bare areas. And that's because we implement organic methods of mechanical weed removal here. We pull the weeds out. When we see weeds here, we remove them physically. We don't spray--
So we don't do any spraying of synthetics on our--
Very minimal spraying is done here. There are times where these methods aren't enough, and we do have to spray. But for the most part, we implement this method first and foremost. And this is the most common method applied to these types of areas. So as you can see, that's what we get left of when we use mechanical methods there. So in an area like this, it is a little bit more acceptable, because there's a lower expectation as to what the turf is used for. Here's another area. This is Coastal Peak Park. This is considered an active park because it does have a playing field. And you can see that off in the distance there on the picture on the right. But what you do see in this picture is, in the perimeter area of the field, we don't use the pesticides in any other way. And you can see that with the weeds that are here. You see all the clumping of the broadleaf weeds, all that that's present. That's managed by mechanical methods and mowing. The expectation there, again, is lower, because it's a passive area on the outside of the playing surface. So, you know, we are very selective where we use our spraying and how we manage this stuff. This is, this is an active park. This is a sports field. This is Irvine Terrace Park. You see the soccer field there. The turf is much, is managed at a much higher standard level of expectation because of the playing surface. We need to keep this field safe and a playable surface. So we do are a little bit more aggressive here with our weeds, and the management of these is at a higher level. And we do have to spray this field at times to help manage, manage the weeds at this, at this park. Again, here, here's another ball field, Bonita Canyon Sports Park. Again, same level of expectation with how this field is maintained, keep it free of weeds and safe for the athletes. So there are times where synthetic pesticides are used to manage this. But then again, it's very minimal and only on an as-needed basis. It's not on a routine spray program. We don't spray it once a month just for the sake of spraying it. We spray it maybe once or maybe twice a year at most, just when we have an upcropping of weeds that becomes hard to And then so the use of our synthetic chemicals, I just want to talk a little bit more about when we use synthetic chemicals, how and when and where do we use them. So they're used as needed primarily in park planters, road sides, and medians. It's highly trained staff that's using these, licensed contractors. We don't have just anybody out there spraying. It's people who are trained in the application and use of these pesticides. There's a science to how much you mix it with water, how much you spray it, how closely you spray it. All that's something that has to be done by trained staff. It's approved for weed abatement by federal and state agencies, and is effective and safer for the user than other similar organic products. Making that point, because there are organic pesticides that are available to be used that maybe aren't as effective, but they are dangerous for the user to use. Roundup is pretty benign when it comes to the user and their application. They could wear some gloves. There's some small safety protocols that they need to take. When it comes to using the synthetic organics, or I'm sorry, the organic pesticides, they're much more caustic. They could burn your skin. They could cause eye damage. They have to wear much more protective gear when using that. Synthetic pesticides, they're the only type of pesticides that eliminate weeds from the green tissue to the roots. So this is what's called a systemic pesticide. It kills the root entirely, all the way down to the root, so it will not grow back. Organic pesticides don't do that. They're topical. They stunt the growth of the weed, but they don't eliminate the weed the way synthetics do. And so when we talk about concerns with, you know, some of these synthetic pesticides, this is just a chart that shows a comparison. When we're talking about acute toxicity, coming in contact with this chemical out in the public, this is where it rates. So you can see what's circled there in red, that's Roundup on the chart on the left. And the one on the right is what's called a glyphosate pesticide. And this is where they rate in level of acute toxicity, all these other products that we come in contact with every day. So a lot of these projects are, products are just as toxic for us, or more, than some of the other things we come in contact with. So we just want to show that as comparison, when, you know, the concern-- So we just want to show that as comparison, when, you know, the concern of Roundup being out there in the public, if someone wants to come in contact with it, which we do all measures to prevent that, but if someone was, this is on the scale here showing what level of toxicity they're actually exposed to.
Let me just step back a moment, just translate this chart, because I think it's an important chart. So what you're saying on the left side of the chart is that common everyday, over-the-counter type headache remedies, pain remedies, vitamins are more, and what is that? Are more toxic than, than what?
Yes. Mayor Dixon, the chart on the right shows the acute toxicity, and it's measured what they call, that third column, it's a lethal dose of what it would take to kill 50% of the population. And these are milligrams per kilogram. And so the more you have, like water at the top, 90,000 milligrams per kilogram, that makes it less toxic. But when you go down towards the bottom of this, if you have less of a lethal dose, obviously, that can affect you, that's why the ones down at the bottom, of course, hydrogen cyanide, et cetera, are more toxic to you, to a human than Roundup is.
And thank you, Dan. This was an important point, because one of the comments I've heard a lot about is we spray toxic chemicals and there's harm to environment. Again, I believe in the education. I think the public doesn't really know these facts. So staff looked at this and added these charts to kind of give some reference to where these chemicals we use fall in the line of our everyday application of other products. So thank you for that, Dan. If you want to go on.
Any other questions on that slide?
No, thank you.
Okay. So moving forward here, so when we use our synthetic pesticides out in the field, we implement best management practices. So synthetics are applied at single low-dose rate per PCA standards. I mentioned that before, there's a science behind how much you apply and how much you mix it with water. Synthetics are not applied during wind or rain. So if it's windy or it's about to rain, we won't apply these synthetics because we don't want them to travel to other places they're not intended to be, and we don't want it to be diluted from rainwater. They're never applied when people or animals are present. There's been times where we've had to spray an area, you know, four or five times in a month's period because the park is so busy. We'll come out to spray, and then people are there, we'll leave. We don't want to, you know, cause a concern for anybody about that, so out of courtesy for them, we'll leave and leave the area, and we'll come back at a time when it's not so populated. And we do that as a courtesy and for safety for them, for peace of mind, and it's easier for us to do the work when there's not people around. We post the area with signs, and we label the product so people know what we're doing when we're out there. The signs are posted, they're aware that that chemical's been applied to the ground, and we're not required to do that, but we do it as a courtesy, again, just to let the public know what we're up to and help them feel safe. The crews ensure synthetics areas dry before we're leaving. We won't leave the area wet where people could touch it or get it on their clothes or anything like that. We wait till the area is dry before we leave the area. And again, it's used in paving areas. We eliminate weed growth in asphalt and concrete. It provides well-grooved, attractive landscaping citywide. So that's really the purpose and the reality of synthetic pesticides when it comes to our use. These are just some examples of the postings we do, how we notify the public, how they're aware. Prop 65, so this is another area of concern. Glyphosate is something that's on the Prop 65 list. The list is over 900 chemicals in the state of California. These are all chemicals known to the state of California to cause cancer. So glyphosate is one of those chemicals, and it is found in these pesticides, and that's the concern a lot of the public has and people are aware of. So, you know, we bring this up to talk about it because it's important to point out that there's many other common products that have this type of labeling. There's chemicals we come in contact with every day that are on the Prop 65 list. So it's really hard to reduce or eliminate this exposure of the public to items on this list, but again, this is one of those items. There at the bottom, I just kind of wanted to label this in there, there is three pesticide category ratings: caution, warning, and danger. Roundup only receives a caution label. Other pesticides, such as organic pesticides, are much more caustic and toxic for us. Those all have warning and danger labels. So we're really choosing the pesticide that's safest to use, not just the most effective but safest to use for the user.
Okay, could you just restate that? Do we use any pesticides that have the warning or danger levels?
Right now, currently, we don't have them in our IPM, but we have tested them, and I'll get to that later in our presentation. We have done some test areas to try out these other pesticides, and we'll talk about that.
Okay.
So here's an example of, yeah, Prop 65 signage. It's everywhere. It's at McDonald's, it's at Starbucks, Marriott Hotel, right here at our central library. These signs are posted to, you know, let people know. So this is to talk a little bit more about our synthetic weed control. You know, Dan here has been working really hard to stay in tune with how, you know, science is moving towards this, the changes that are being made in the industry, and he's aware of the concerns of the public. So what we're showing here is if you see in 2017, the city used 137 gallons of Roundup as part of our IPM. In 2018, we reduced that by 44%, just to be more proactively involved in finding other alternative means and measures to keep our pesticide management under control without using, you know, synthetic chemicals any more than necessary. The same with the 240. That's another synthetic pesticide that causes concern, and we reduced that by 26%. So we're always looking for opportunities to reduce the amount of synthetic chemicals we're using, and we're always actively aware of that concern, and we look for any opportunity we can find to keep that to a minimum. This can fluctuate depending on the different types of years we have. If we have a year where we have a lot of bad weeds, we may have to use more than we did the previous year, but the goal here is to keep that to a minimum and to always look for opportunities to reduce that. And so when you look at those gallons there, 76 gallons, that covers over 1,000 acres of city-owned landscaping. We have 1,000 acres that we maintain. So when you put it in perspective, it's about nine ounces per acre. That's about, that's less than what's in this water bottle here, per year, that we're applying to all of our city landscapes. So it's pretty minimal when you look at it in perspective. And then, again, these chemicals are used on an as-needed basis as opposed to be implied routine. We only do them when absolutely necessary. So in 2018, we did a trial of some organic pesticides at a test area of landscape. We wanted to make sure we were well-educated about the different options that were available out there, and organic pesticides is really becoming more and more popular and more commonly used, so we did try this out on some landscaping. And what we found is those labels, as you see there, caution, warning, the warning labels were of concern to us. They could cause permanent eye damage, they could burn your skin, they're acid-based herbicides. And then what we found in applying all four of these is that it requires three, at a minimum of three additional applications to control the weeds as opposed to the one application we would typically do with the synthetic pesticides.
Can I just ask a clarifying question then?
Yeah.
So you're saying that organic products are also toxic?
They?
Or cause, or can be harmful?
They can be harmful, yes. That's correct language. They can be harmful to the user applying it, and if anybody comes in contact with it while it's still wet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So, you know, doing this, doing this test application here, we found that the organic pesticides were not effective, were more toxic to the user, and cost five times as much as our synthetic pesticides. And there is no effective organic herbicide that works on broadleaf weeds and turf. So when we talk about managing our playing fields, managing our active parks, there's not an organic pesticide available that can manage the weeds to the level it needs to be at. We also did a pilot program. Lincoln School, Newport Mesa Unified School District, we use this field with them, this school at their, this field at their school. So we actively work with them on the maintenance of this field. They requested us to stop using any synthetic herbicides on this field in April of 2016. So at that time, we renovated the field with new turf. The only thing we did for pest control was trapping rodents, and there was a lot of clumping of broadleaf weeds emerging, so that was the reason for the turf replacement. So this is what the turf looked like before we eliminated synthetic pesticides. This is while it was under management of synthetic pesticides, and this is in 2015. 2016, we replaced the turf with all brand-new sod, brand-new sod at that point, and at that point, from that point forward, no more synthetic pesticides were being applied. Here's what the turf looks like today. So as you can see, a lot of those broadleaf weeds returned, a lot of the new turf has been overtaken, overcome. We're not able to use any synthetic pesticides here, so the management of the turf is already getting out of hand after just that short period of time.
Is this turf being used for the same capacity, play games, soccer, field games, et cetera?
Yes, there is programming at that field being used now, mostly programming that's done by the school district.
Have we heard from the school district? Are they comfortable with the condition of the playing fields?
The city does programming here too as well, just to clarify, but Newport Mesa School District, it's their IPM to be completely pesticide-free. So whether they're happy with it or not is aside the point because they don't have a choice.
Okay.
But that's how they're managing their turf.
I see.
We were asked by council to compare with other cities. We're all very much aware that Irvine has gone all organics. Talking with the staff at our level, we've been finding the impacts of going to an all-organics program. They've experienced a $2 to $5 million a year cost increase for managing a full organics program. Costa Mesa, they just recently went all organics. They're experiencing 10x cost increase in some areas, and they're actually trading services. They're no longer maintaining their road sides, the areas of sidewalk in front of people's houses, they're no longer taking care of that. So now homeowners are going out there spraying weeds with Roundup or whatever else they could find over the counter, and to go out there and manage the weeds on their own. So I don't know what the benefit is there because now the public's out there and it's not controlled, and that's an even greater concern, but nonetheless. City of Huntington Beach, they've, they're looking at an organic turf management program. They're doing a pilot study at Central Park West. Their cost projection is 30% increased in 2019. Tustin, they've been asked to look into this. They've got a turf and park sustainability plan consisting of organic fertilization, not complete removal of pesticides, but organic fertilization, and they're doing a six-month review. So, you know, we looked around at these other cities and talked with other staff. This is a picture of a field in Irvine. This is one of their ball fields. This is what their field looks like today under an all-organics turf management plan. A lot of clumping of broadleaf weeds there, so they use a mechanical method. So they're out there mowing this field a couple times a week, and they're asked to be, mow it even more frequently than that because people don't like the weeds, but there's only so much they could do. This is City of Costa Mesa, this is Teumaco Park. It's a passive park, but that mallow you see there, those big broadleaf weeds, those grow so fast. They'll mow the turf and they'll be back there again in a matter of days, and mechanical methods are only being used for that, and that's the struggles they're having. This is the test area that Huntington Beach is doing. You can see there, that picture on the left, that the grass is literally burned along the edge. That's from using the organic pesticide because it's so caustic, it burns everything. It doesn't just eliminate the weeds, it burns it all. And then you can see that patch on the right, it's already starting to decline just from the use of these organic pesticides. San Clemente, they recently went through a similar discussion like we're doing now. They decided that, you know, some community members came and requested a new IPM to go pesticide-free. They are aware of the increased maintenance cost and the greater manual labor. They actually moved to go 100% pesticide-free, but they were contacted by state and local agencies, Fish and Game, Wildlife, expressing concern about the invasive species in a lot of these areas. They recommended to not eliminate synthetics, that synthetics needs to be a tool available to them to manage their landscaping. So they went back and changed. They actually consulted with one of their master associations. The master association said they found that the cost is twice as much and half as effective. So they've adopted a balanced approach. They're using alternative pesticides and only use synthetic pesticides when other methods have failed. City of Burbank, they just did a one-year study on doing this. They went completely synthetic-free, eliminated those chemicals. What they found after a year is they're having to work a lot on tolerance and education because the condition of the turf is continuing to decline, and people aren't happy with the way things are looking. The best way they've been able to control their weeds is manually, but it's not practical with their staffing levels, so they've even launched volunteer programs to try to get people to come out and help pull weeds. They've got a lack of volunteers to do that. They're not able to staff the program. So, and they're finding organics have a higher toxicity level, they're more concerned about their staff, so they'd rather use synthetics. So they're requesting to go back to council and ask to have synthetics added back into the program. City of Carlsbad, similar program to ours, you know, they, mostly organics, organic methods, organic pesticides, they do use synthetic pesticides in targeted areas and targeted manners. So that's a, that's a program, you know, that is similar to ours that I think seems to work, and, you know, City of Carlsbad is being touted as one of the great cities that has implemented a good, successful program, and I feel that we are in that category with them, so I think it's important to make that comparison. So out of this, just with our recommendations, we request that we could continue to, you know, use our current IPM program, which is organics-first program, is continuously evaluated, and it's looking for the need of synthetics to be as a tool in our IPM. It's in compliance with all these permits, all these regulatory agencies. It's effective and it's economical. It provides for safe and aesthetically pleasing landscapes throughout the city. So with that, that's the end of our presentation and ready for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you, Mica. Let me ask Mr. Drayrie, I'll first with you.
I think I know the reason, but artificial turf on all the fields, I mean, from a cost gap point, is significant, but what are the other, are there issues with that? Why wouldn't we just go to all artificial turf?
Well, the reason to go all artificial turf is broad. The benefits to it is, you know, you're reducing this element of needing an IPM to manage that turf. You now have artificial turf that doesn't require pest control. It reduces the amount of irrigation that's used. It's reduced the amount of staff time used to maintain the field. Players and athletes seem to like artificial turf. It's very popular in the recreation community, but with regards to, you know, this, an IPM program, it does eliminate the need for this invasive an IPM program with artificial turf.
Thank you.
Any other questions up here on the dials? See, Mr. Hurdman?
I don't have a question, but the very last page of your presentation, the budget, you want to go over that real quick, Mica?
Yes, we could go over that. I put that in there in case there's questions about that. So to do a comparison, you know, we're looking at our current landscape budget here. Parks, medians, road sides, city facilities, civic center, in-house pesticide use, we're about $5 million, 5.3 million. We're anticipating, estimating that our increase could be 20% to 30% if we go completely organics and eliminate synthetic pesticides. So we're looking at a million to a million and a half dollar increase to our landscape maintenance budget. I just thought it was important to point that out, that, you know, there is a cost associated to this, and we will know how successful it is, and there will be a trade-off. You know, we will, we will see a difference in the quality of our landscaping, so.
Okay. Any questions further, Mr. Hurdman?
All right. Let's open it up to the public discussion. If you have any questions, please come forward, and if there are a number of you, I'd appreciate if you could come, come forward and be prepared to stand at either lectern and be prepared, and stand in a single file, please.
Hello, I'm Nancy Gardner. There's a lot of emotion attached to this because everybody's concerned about anything that might be at least a bit toxic, but I would like to remind the council, we are a signatory to the nature reserve of Orange County, which the mission is to preserve as much natural habitat as possible. We are part of it because of Buck Gully, and if you ask the people that manage those lands, the thousands of acres they have to manage, there are times when it's too broad. You know, you can't do anything but use a synthetic, and they use them very sparingly. The Irvine Ranch Conservancy, which manages thousands of acres, in one year used 64 ounces. So obviously, they're very, when they do it, it's one person with a backpack spraying it, it's not a big thing with lots of sprays and everything, so it's very careful. And again, you saw their list up there today, it's at the end. You try all these others, but there's some things that don't work well, particularly with invasives. If you don't get them all, you're just doing it again. The natives sometimes are very difficult to reestablish. So I would urge you not to take this particular method completely off the table, because there are certain areas, particularly in the natural lands, where people aren't there anyway, that you will want to use them. Otherwise, it makes, as you saw, increased costs and difficulties. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Iorani. I was going to say a few things, but I'm changing it now because what it looks like on the ground, that was a really nice presentation, but what it looks like on the ground when you're at Cliff Park or Castaways like I have been, and I have seen them spraying, there's no signs, there's no labels, there's no indication on the truck. I have taken pictures and videotapes, and I've documented this to a point where it's well documented. So that sign, that Roundup sign that was shown today, I have never seen it before except at Cliff Park after I spent an hour and a half calling some of the people that work with parks to please stop spraying because there were no labels. I had a doctor, that's a friend of mine, with me with our dogs. I have witnesses. So what I'm trying to say is that everything that was presented right now, as a resident of Newport Beach and a teacher here with students, with kids that go to school here, I do not trust the people that just presented that because they just did not tell me the truth. I was going to be a lot nicer about this, but I can't. I can't. This is the welfare of many people here. And I have seen spraying when there's, the spray drifts. They said they don't spray in the wind. I have documentation where they were spraying in the wind. I have documentation of people pushing strollers right next to the sprayer. I have documentation of dogs sniffing where it's still wet, where it was just sprayed because he's walking on to another area in Castaways spraying down a hill. He can't see behind him. There are no signs anywhere. I have been exposed, my friend that's a doctor's been exposed, our pets have been exposed. This has been posted on nextdoor.com. I've gotten hundreds of responses from people that want their children protected. They want to know when they roll around in the grass that they aren't getting this stuff all over them, that down the line will cause cancer. Maybe not acute exposure, it's a silent killer, so we can all shove it under the carpet if we want to, but we're not going to let it happen. So I was going to just say a few nice things, but this has become something else, and I'm sorry to have to say that.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name's Adam Swarlow. I'm a resident here at Corona Del Mar. Moved here two and a half years ago from Connecticut, and excuse me if I get a bit emotional. This is, this was my dog. We moved here in late 2016 from Connecticut where they don't use synthetic pesticides. And in July of last year, he was diagnosed with cancer. We spent hours, days playing in all the grass around Corona Del Mar, and the reason I moved here was to be able to walk everywhere and be in the parks and play there. I can't tell you how much this, I miss my best friend, and all signs point to the fact that it was, this was caused by the spraying of Roundup. There were multiple times where we would go visit the park, we would see residue on the grass itself, on the pack of sandra. Again, like the woman before me had pointed out, no, there were no signs saying that there was anything sprayed on this grass. I, the other day, I witnessed gentlemen spraying the sidewalk next to Smart and Final with it. So to say that it's sprayed without anybody around and that people are, that it's dry before that the sprayer leaves is just not right. It's not true because I witnessed it myself. I wish that we would stop using this. I'd rather have crappy-looking grass and weeds than expose people to cancer and dogs to cancer. There's nothing that's going to bring this wonderful creature back. And I see people's children running around in this grass, and I just can't stand to think that we're spraying this harmful pesticide. I'll have weeds as tall as this building before spraying this crap around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, dear Mayor and members of the city councils. My name is Mila Zhu, and I'm a junior from Portola High School. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity here to talk about my opinion on the current pest control and future plans. As I started doing research on the harms on the pesticides, I noticed that obesogens, something called obesogens, they're endocrine disruptors. And as I, as I read more articles on NCBI, and I found more medical journals talking about that, they alter the function of proper storage and metabolism of fat tissue. They also, they also, the low use of chemical exposures, they were also associated with the weight gain on experimental animals. So when looking at our daily lives, humans and animals, they can, they can both have common exposure to places that were treated with pesticides. And as a high school student, I believe that we should definitely start taking actions and building a healthier community for our residents and our pets and our families by adopting an organic and scientific pest control system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dear Mayor and city council members, good afternoon. My name is Alice Lee from Portola High School in Irvine, and I'm here to address the problem of using chemical pesticides. So pesticides are used in, Roundup is being used in almost all the public spaces in Newport Beach, and one of the ingredients that is extremely harmful to human body are glyphosate. Although they are marked as safe, but a lot of scientific proves that a small amount can cause lowering IQ, EQ, liver cancer, brain cancer, and et cetera, et cetera. And as a student in Irvine, I'm really thankful that our government system are taking action to help us from those exposure from those chemical pesticides. And cities such as Tustin, Mission Viejo, Burbank are also taking actions. Think about that. People in Newport Beach are buying organic foods. They want to buy organic foods because they want to stay healthy, and I'm pretty sure they want their children to be safe from, from those chemical pesticides where they cannot control from seeing them. So I wanted to say that we want organic landscaping practices because we want a bright future for the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Eric Lynn. I am an 11th grader at Northwood High School in Irvine. And so today, what I wanted to make a comment about was more of like the research section or like the research aspect, I guess, of the current system, the IPM. So I think that what they're saying right now is like great. I like that they're doing minimal spraying, using minimal chemicals, relying more on manual processes. I think that's a great idea. But what I want to focus on was the research behind the chemicals that they do use and like the synthetic pesticides, herbicides, all those stuff. So right now, there's a lack of research on the topic of pesticides, herbicides, and whatever they're spraying right now. And most of the research that we do have is actually cherry-picked from the chemical companies themselves that are doing the research. And there really isn't anybody that checks them. Like you can say that it goes through the EPA, you can say that it's approved by federal agencies, but the reality is that they don't do much to check the actual research of what the chemical companies are doing themselves. And I also wanted to bring up a point about the graph that we saw earlier. I thought it was a very interesting graph that showed the glyphosate, like the toxicity and how it's lower than most common medicines like Advil and stuff like that. But I thought it was interesting how they measured toxicity, which was like how much it takes to kill you. Like sure, maybe glyphosate won't kill you, but what will it do to you? Like, we don't know because there's no research about it. And maybe it won't kill you, but maybe it'll cause cancer, heart disease, all those negative effects, and we don't know what they're doing. And just because it's not as toxic as some of the like Advil and stuff like that, that doesn't mean it's not harmful. And I think someone over there actually said it earlier about the organic pesticides, the organic alternatives that they tried, that they were less toxic, but they were more harmful. And I think that could be like in the case of glyphosate as well. And so that's all I wanted to comment about today. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Angela, and I'm a local resident here. Recently, a study by five US scientists found that high exposure to pesticides containing glyphosate increased the risk of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma cancer by 41%. The study finds that there is a compelling link between glyphosate and non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. Many people may think that if they don't live in the area, then they are safe from exposure to glyphosate. But a recent study by US Perg found glyphosate in 19 out of 20 popular spirits. Also, there is a worldwide movement to limit the use of glyphosate all over the world. On January 1st of this year, a French court has banned Roundup Pro 360, a weed killer containing glyphosate. The Cancer Research Arm of the World Health Organization believes that glyphosate is probably carcinogenic to humans. And on March 19th of this year, a jury in San Francisco Federal Court found glyphosate was a substantial factor in causing the plaintiff's non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. This is a second such lawsuit, and the first was in 2018, and that one ended in a $289 million verdict. At this point in time, while there could be some arguments that the effects of glyphosate is not absolute, it is better to be safe than sorry. We should stop using glyphosate, or at least stop using glyphosate until we verify that it is absolutely safe to use. You know, sometimes I see children playing in parks and in the grass, and I see them putting their hands in their mouths. I would feel a lot better if these children weren't surrounded by glyphosate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Mayor, city council members, my name is Eric Gao, and I'm a sophomore at Northwood High School in the neighboring city of Irvine. And until a few weeks ago or a few months ago, before I joined the Non-Toxic Neighborhoods Youth Action Team, I never had any idea of the detrimental effects that these pesticides had on my personal life. I've always thought that they were an isolated instance of usage, but I never realized that they could actually inhibit my intellectual development and those of my peers, the same people that go to my school. Specifically, several comprehensive independent studies have found that pesticides, specifically glyphosate, which is a key ingredient in Roundup, are correlated to decreasing brain activity resulting in decreased IQ. And if we want to talk about economics, as they bring up, the European Union quantified the impact of glyphosate and its detriment to IQ, finding that there was an over $240 billion economic downturn due to IQ loss because of glyphosate. Even if a small percentage of that could come back to the city due to the removal of these synthetic pesticides, it would still massively outweigh the potential increases in costs. And we don't even know where their numbers as for increases in costs come from, nor do they factor in the social consequences of using these dangerous chemicals. But we are the future, the children that are going to schools in Newport Beach, in Irvine, in these other cities where these dangerous chemicals such as Roundup are present, will be the new minds who will push innovation in the future. And unless we have an environment where we can focus on growing intellectually and not worry about all our education going to waste due to the presence of these dangerous chemicals in our brains, there will be no way for us to have a bright future in a world where we're too busy worrying about the environment where we grew up with, these sidewalks that we walk on, or these school fields that we spent the majority of our high school careers on. If we're too focused about that and worrying about their negative effects, there will be no way for us, the future, to have a positive impact on society, which means that even if there are some short-term potential downturns or some short-term potential detriments to using organic and not these Roundup dangerous chemicals, we still need to do it. Instead of having a zero-tolerance rule on pesticides, which justifies the usage in mass doses of Roundup, we should instead have a zero-tolerance policy on detrimental effects to our youth, which are the most important group of people within current-day society, and far outweighs the potential negative effects of a few weeds in our fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That was amazing. I'm Sherri Bloom. I'm Corona Del Mar resident. I'm the one that started the petition that now has close to 1,600 signatures as of this morning about trying to not use glyphosate anymore and toxic pesticides. When I bought a place here, I wanted a healthy community, place we can walk everywhere. I have a big dog. I have a grandbaby now that plays in the park, and we don't have yards. We have to walk, especially with a big dog. We have to walk numerous times a day and expose our pets to this. I had two Golden Retrievers before this dog that both had lymphoma, and my dad's in remission from lymphoma. So I've seen how horrible it is. And when I took my Golden to, I'm so sorry, the Veterinary Oncology Group in Tustin, and he was five years old, Mona Rosenberg, who is the head of all of them, said to me that the incidence of lymphoma in dogs is the highest in our area, which they believe is because of the pesticides. So that alone, even my regular vet, Dr. Ayton, said, keep your dog away from that. Stuff is bad. They, the vets all know it's bad. They've read studies. And, you know, I walk him everywhere. I'm always walking. I'm sure you know my dog more than you know me around. And I didn't know, they sprayed the medians, but they sprayed all of the road sides, the trees, the areas where all the dogs go. I have never once seen a sign anywhere, and I'm out three, four times a day. In the five years I've been in Newport Beach, Corona Del Mar, never have seen a sign about spraying, and I've seen them spraying. And they, I have the pesticide report that I summarized for just Corona Del Mar, and there are some major concerns that I have. For example, March 1st last year, they used five different pesticides in one day, and I don't think they know the synergistic effects of the possibility of these dangerous chemicals all used together at the same time. They're spraying in the cracks in the concrete, so just walking along the sidewalks, dogs breathe it in, they lick their paws, they, it goes in their nose, it's absorbed through their paws. And Glystar Pro, which is sprayed in Grant Howard Park numerous times, like, for example, July it was sprayed of last year, sprayed four times, is not Roundup, but it's 41% glyphosate. So it's basically the same thing. And glyphosate is the thing that is potentially carcinogenic. Yesterday and today, I was walking through the park and there were kids barefoot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
All right. Hello, Mayor and city council. My name's Steve Fang. I'm a freshman from Seiko School. I participate in multiple sports. For example, I play golf, and most of the time, I practice in Strawberry Farms, which is a great place to practice in. And recently, I just made my, my school's golf team, and we started practicing in Newport Beach Golf Course, and it just feels a lot different. First of all, every time I went there, I don't feel that well. And I went home and do some research, it's because Newport has not banned pesticides, which are really harmful for humans. And one of the articles I found online is from Oxford Academic, and it reports 300,000, one in 300,000 farmers from Norway, France, and US reports states that 3.5 million people are at, are at risks because of pesticides. And throughout history, we tend to, we tend not to notice these effects until after some tragedies like a massive amount of death happens. For example, the Black Death during, during the Middle Ages. And instead, since we already know the effect that can, that can happen from pesticides, why do we, why are we still waiting to ban them? We should, we should just ban pesticides and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Tammy Belcher. I have laryngitis, so I have to apologize for my voice, but I'm a Newport Beach homeowner. I'm the mother of three young children, a six-year-old, a three-year-old, and an 11-month-old. And I just wanted to point out a few quick things. One, this is of concern at a national level. I don't know if you're aware that last Tuesday, the second federal case that attributed glyphosate to a lawn, a professional who was administering Roundup professionally, was a unanimous decision that his cancer was attributed to that. And also last Tuesday, the LA Board of Supervisors ordered a moratorium of applications of glyphosate on all of their county property until the public health experts can determine its safety. So I think this is, you know, a concern, not just in Newport Beach. But as a mother here, I guess something that's really concerning to me is that obviously we live in a community that's really concerned with aesthetics, and I think that we're prioritizing that over the safety of our children. I have a six-year-old with multiple chemical sensitivities, and I had testing on her done, and she tested very high in glyphosate, which can also be from exposure to foods, but I am probably the most neurotic person when it comes to the food I feed my children and the extent that I go to make sure that they ingest nutritionally healthy food. And so I was devastated to find that her body had these high levels of it, and it can only be attributed to our environment. So... and it can only be attributed to our environment. So I don't think this is just our problem for our pets and our children. I think it's all of us, and I think it's on a much bigger level. But I think as a community here, where we have the means to be addressing it, we should.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, City Council Members and Mayor Dixon. Thank you for having me. My name is David Halal, and I am a freshman at Orange Lutheran High School. But I live in Irvine, and I went to elementary school and middle school there. So I know a lot about the fields as a student-athlete. And in elementary school, they were still spraying the fields with pesticides. And the school that I went to was called Vista Verde. And the field we'd run on was filled with patches, and it was just unsteady, unstable. The ground was hard. But as soon as they stopped spraying it, the ground became soft and luscious and green. And it was great to run on and great for the kids. So, I mean, if you're so worried about aesthetics, that might be a field you want to look at. But also, growing up, there was a kid at my school, and this was before they stopped spraying pesticides, who, he got cancer several different times without it having a history in his family. And lucky for him, he was able to survive. But my younger brother, he played baseball, and he had a friend on his team who ended up getting cancer, again, no history in the family. And he ended up passing away. And it was just such a shame that this had to happen, because people wanted to be spraying pesticides for, I don't know, whatever the cost was, you know, a million dollars less. But when you think about the cost, would you rather have a lawsuit against the Newport City government, or pay an extra 20% to 30% a year for safe fields for everybody? And one thing that I noticed during the presentation was the chart. Roundup, yes, it may have been lower than Advil on the chart for toxicity, but I don't know how many people in here are taking Advil every day. But a lot more people are exposed to Roundup every day just by going outside. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Next speaker, please.
My name is Trevor Conti, and good evening, Mayor Dixon, City Council Members. I play baseball, and my friend, you should stop spraying toxic pesticides where families, kids like me, and babies and pets play, just for cosmetic reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Ethan. I come from Irvine. I'm a junior at one of their high schools. And I just wanted to kind of bring to the point that the idea of kind of past successes. I think it's really interesting that you brought up Carlsbad in your presentation in Irvine as well, because looking back on this, especially with Carlsbad, you say we have a very similar program with Carlsbad and Newport Beach here. But the thing is, Carlsbad has so much more of a focus on using organic pesticides. And looking, even though you mentioned how the fields here seem so much better than the fields in other cities, we're also looking at how do people feel themselves. And looking at Irvine and Carlsbad and these other cities that have started to go non-toxic, we're seeing a very high amount of satisfaction rate from the residents. They don't feel unhappy that they're sacrificing a little bit more money, that they're sacrificing a little bit of aesthetic sense for the idea of safety for their children and for their future generations. And looking at Newport Beach, so many times, the residents are already choosing the idea of spending a little more, or maybe giving up on a little aesthetic sense for safety in terms of like purchasing food. They will always go for organic, because they want that safety for students. So time and time again, we've shown that we want that safety over the idea of maybe using a little more money, or maybe giving up on aesthetics. So I don't see why we can't extend this principle to the idea of usage of pesticides. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor Dixon and City Council Members. My name is Kim Conti, and I'm the co-founder of Non-Toxic Neighborhoods. And we are here to ask you that you make the health of our children your priority over control. We've had the pleasure of working with Dave Webb, Dan Sreeno, can't believe you're retiring. He met with us too much. He's out of here. And we've met with them at your residents' request. My children play baseball on your fields. My husband's opening a West Coast office in your city. We love Newport. But your residents want the same protection that other cities are providing. And I would like to share with you, we reached out to Kyle Lancaster and Chris Heselatine, the Public Works Directors of Carlsbad, to get their report. I have their email. The city of Carlsbad is successfully, organically maintaining their city, including their municipal golf course. And they're using Park West, you know, the same landscape contractor you guys are using. But unfortunately, Park West is using glyphosate and 240 in Newport. And these residents, Corona Del Mar, Newport, want the same protection for their children in the parks where they're playing from these harmful pesticides. The chart that you guys shared was actually created by WAFriends.org. Sounds like a good group, right? Positive group. The president of WAFriends.org works for Bayer. And I feel like that chart is very misleading and doesn't factor in that glyphosate is known in the state of California to be cancer-causing. And we've proven that we have products and tools and technology now that can work. And we understand that land managers have different issues and struggles than managing parks. So we have a new technology that's root wave, that's systemically and safely kills invasives. So our goal is to get every city all of the tools that are effective and work and that are safe for our kids. And we also know that they have to be fiscally sound. So we share on a monthly basis an update on what's working, because everybody just wants the same protection for their children. And you guys have a unique opportunity to use Park West, who's successfully doing this. You know, Carlsbad admitted, the city staff admitted, that there was a three-month lag before they were seeing success in this program. But Park West hired a new foreman, and they're extremely happy. And Burbank, Mike Del Campo is, you know, having his own issue because they don't contract the landscape workout. But they're not going back to ask for Roundup. They know that that's done. And the headlines alone, I think one of the most interesting ones is that the golf course industry, one of the largest manufacturers of synthetic pesticides and harmful pesticides for the golf course industry, is no longer, from a liability standpoint, allowed to sell glyphosate. Not that they don't want to, but they're no longer allowed to do it, because their insurance company will not allow them to, and they won't cover that. So we're here to help you. We want to provide all of the resources, the requests for bids that Carlsbad put to get together. And again, I think Newport deserves the same protection in the parks where they play, for their children and pets, as the other cities in Orange County and California.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Yes, next speaker, please.
Greetings, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. I would just like to share a personal story of mine. Before, I currently live in Irvine and go to university high school. But before I moved here, I used to live in a really close-knit community in the Bay Area. And as a child, I would do what normal children would do, you know, go to parks, play ball, roll in the grass, et cetera, et cetera. But it wasn't until that I moved out that I found out that our parks were sprayed with only synthetic pesticides. And that kind of horrified me, because I didn't know I was being exposed to, well, a carcinogen. And I worry for that my childhood friends might also be exposed to these chemicals. But since I didn't have a phone at that time, I didn't have any way to contact them. So... But now, every day, I take the pleasure of taking a trail to and from school. I can appreciate that I won't have to worry about being exposed to something that could potentially give me cancer. And before I give my time to the other speaker, I would just like to end this with a slightly lighter note. Even with the insistence from me and my fellow peers of the use of synthetic pesticides to the dangers of children or pets and personal health, there's also the concept that if, that since the demand for organic foods and other organic products is high, property that is sprayed with organic pesticides may also have an increase in value. That's just a little bit of food for thought, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, next speaker, please. Please identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Jessica Land, and I am a freshman from Northwood High School. And I'm here today to bring awareness towards the harmful pesticides that everyone is exposed to every day. As a lacrosse player at Northwood High School, I am exposed to the fields and turfs, which we use every day to practice on. And on these fields, chemicals are used to kill fungus, weeds, insects, et cetera, to maintain the right condition for these fields. But it is linked to numerous health effects and diseases, such as cancer, asthma, and autism. And if we look at the big picture, pesticides are used almost everywhere outside, at parks, playgrounds, and playing fields. And just imagine how many adolescents, adults, elders are using these fields to either spend some time outdoors, play sports, exercise, or just to have some fresh air outside. And I hope we can all take action towards this problem, because allowing people to enjoy nature without being concerned or worried about their health being affected in a harmful way would be a remarkable change in our community. Thank you.
You said Northwood. Isn't that in Irvine?
Yes.
Is Irvine all organic now? Yes. So Irvine, just for your information, your school field is probably all organic now. Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Coco Land, and I'm an eighth grader from Sierra Vista Middle School.
Which city is that in, please?
Irvine.
Irvine, thank you.
Surprisingly, when owners walk their dogs through parks and fields, the pets are actually being harmed through pesticides that are sprayed in grass. When the pets are in the fields, their body is contacted with the grass that contains pesticides, causing them to acquire the chemicals, which can cause many diseases in the pets. In addition to pets being affected by the pesticides, when the pets are returning from the park to their homes, they still contain the chemicals from the grass. And then they put it around the house. So it could also affect the people living in the houses. So I believe we should all take action in our community to promote a safer environment for everyone.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, me again. Vanessa Handy Armstrong. I had a whole speech, but everybody's pretty much said what I've had to say. So I'm just going to hit a couple points. One specifically being that, when it comes to glyphosate, but this is not about just eliminating glyphosate. This is about a whole systems approach. But glyphosate is hot in the news. It is, you see it on mainstream TV. They're looking for class-action lawsuits. There's been two landmark lawsuits, just one. So I urge you to, right now, eliminate that, because all it takes is for one resident to get wind and call that number, and Newport Beach is, and you guys are still applying it. So that might be something you really want to think about eliminating immediately. To address staff's presentation, thank you for having this presentation, by the way. Really appreciate it. Couple things, because I'm a Costa Mesa resident, and I'm also the one that championed Newport Mesa going organic. So, and to address the Lincoln Field issue, the reason why those weeds are coming back is because it's organic by neglect. And organic by neglect means that you're not using inputs to improve soil health, which makes the grass stronger, which chokes out the weeds naturally. So when you talk about an organic field, it doesn't mean that you just stop using pesticides. It means you use organic inputs, not organic products, like real inputs, like things that are from the earth, kelp, you know, lye. I mean, I'm not an expert in this field, but it's a whole different systems approach, and there's training for this. So this is what staff and contractors need, is they need training in this. This isn't about just bringing in a chemical and killing this weed. This is about looking at the holistic approach. As far as, to address the organic herbicide issue as being more toxic than the synthetics, yes, it is acutely, at that moment, yes. Suppress will burn your hand, which is an organic herbicide. Will burn your hand, will burn the applicator's hand. However, it does not cause chronic issues. And that is what synthetic pesticides do. They cause chronic health problems. So the organics may cause an acute problem, but not a chronic. However, they're not all organic pesticides do cause acute. In fact, right now in Costa Mesa, we are piloting a 25B-exempt systemic herbicide. And what that means, it doesn't even have to be registered by the EPA. So it's completely safe to the applicator and to the resident. So we're going to pilot it. We're not just going to throw it out there. We're going to check it out and see if it works. But the point is, more of these products are coming to market. And Newport Mesa, what they use for their weeds is a steam machine. It's a probe that goes down. I agree with the health of the field, and that needs to be addressed. However, it's because it's organic by neglect, and that's a very important point to make. And to address the artificial turf, Councilman Avery, no. Horrible idea. It's expensive. It's toxic. It's 25 degrees hotter playing. And no, players do not like it. So if that issue ever comes up, if you have any questions, I have all the science and information on that. So I just really hope that you really just move in the right direction. Stop 240 immediately. Stop glyphosate immediately, and let's talk, and let's start getting you some solutions, because it's been done. It's being done. And as far as cost goes, I think our residents are willing to pay a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Now, did you already speak before?
No.
All right. The city attorney will help you there. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Were you going to make a comment?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry, sir.
Okay. So what I passed out to you is the graphs from a recent study published by Charles Brenbrook of Washington State University. It was very recent, maybe within the past month. I'm not sure. I don't know if any of you are familiar with this, but this explains why the lawsuits are winning, and what's wrong with our governmental agencies who determine whether or not a chemical is safe. For example, he has illustrated glyphosate here. And he wanted to get to the bottom of why the World Health Organization declared it was carcinogenic, when the EPA, US EPA, did not. And here's the answer. There is a full study. It's published all over the place. It was published in, I believe, Environmental Sciences Europe. And it explains why it can be a mistake to rely only on the government agencies, because they can be very much behind on the actual science. In this case, they used only science that was supplied to them by Monsanto and by the industry. And you can see in the graphs why that was problematic. They didn't consider the entire world body of published science. And that's why there's this difference between what people who are, say, selling Bayer products will tell you, versus what the judge and jury decides in these lawsuits, because they're looking at the entire body of science. I also wanted to say that we're not just talking about open space. Sorry, I didn't address you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Kathleen Halal. I live in Irvine. And our city is extremely happy with what's going on over there. And those pictures, I would say, were misleading, unfortunately. I would recommend that you drive the two miles over the hill and take a look at the Vista Verde school fields and Los Lomas Park, and our baseball parks. Our children are ecstatic. My youngest son has bee allergies. He needs an EpiPen if he's stung by bees. There has been absolutely no uptick in broken ankles, weeds stinging, bees stinging anyone in our city by having gone organic. And unlike Newport Mesa, we did what Vanessa, who spoke earlier, was referring to. We did the whole system. So we're feeding the soil. The lawn is lush. It's better for athletes. And we don't have dirt patches now. So if you just drive over and take a look, or if you wanted to go visit with our city council member, Christina Shay, I'm sure she'd be thrilled to show you around. Residents are thrilled with what's happened in Irvine. We feel safer. Everything still looks beautiful. No one's complaining. So I also just wanted to mention briefly, I'd be curious to know about the amount of, the total amount of glyphosate that was applied in Newport Beach, because your figures were, you had said you reduced it to 76 gallons, which is amazing. But I'm assuming that's concentrate. So if that's 76 gallons of concentrate at 2 to 3 ounces per gallon, that comes out to 3,241 gallons of what was applied. And that's not counting sidewalks, walkways, and streets, which is where it's mostly used. So I'd just be curious to know the actual amount that was applied.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Madam Mayor and
Hello, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Kailin Hahn, and I'm a seventh grader at Orchard Hills Middle School in Irvine. And I would just like to steer away from all the stats that the previous speakers have been coming up and stating, and come, talk to you as a human and a citizen of Southern California. Now, we have two citizens here that have practically broken down in tears when they think about the dog and the family members that have suffered because of this, of this pesticide that they are using in these fields. And I remember that the city staff also brought up the fact that it would cost an additional $1 million to go all organic. But the fact that these people are taking in account money over people's lives is just very bad. And we should be thinking about the citizens and the constituents that voted for you, and think about the health benefits that would come with going all organic. And I'd like to thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. Yes, next speaker, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Bob Johnson. I live in Irvine also. I worked in government, I'm retired now. I worked in government for a good portion of my life, both for cities and counties at all levels. The one thing that I understood as a public employee that the primary function and purpose of city government, county government, is to protect the health and safety of their citizens. And that's why we're here. I've been involved with nontoxic Irvine and nontoxic neighborhoods now for about three years. Didn't know anything about pesticides when I got involved. When I was actually involved, no one had any idea that I had any understanding of how government worked. But I did. And of course, what's come out of it, and they talked about Vista Verde, which is close to where I live in Turtle Ridge. My kids played in the fields there, and it was like concrete. And so the school district decided to go organic, didn't know what they were doing. And so it was organic by neglect for about a year, and then went in and basically worked on the soil. It was a total transformation. So if you take a look at that field now, it'll kind of blow you away. You didn't see what it was like before, but it was a total transformation. So your staff acknowledged the fact that it really comes down to soil. If you have healthy soil, you don't have weeds, and it reduces the pest issues from trees to shrubs, to grass, to a number of different areas. The other thing I'd like just briefly say is that we've worked very closely with the Audubon Society at Star Ranch, which is just a little bit east of, not Mission Viejo, but back in that area, back in the hills there. It's 4,000 acres, and they've been totally organic for a number of years. They don't use any pesticides, they don't use any fertilizers. They go in and maintain it, and quite frankly, they discovered that by, like, you know, with a thistle and whatever, if they go in and focus on it and pull it out, hand weed it, or cut it, that basically, they've totally controlled, they've eliminated within three years the issue of thistle, which is one of the primary issues in the well-lined areas. I don't think I have anything else to say, other than the fact that this really is really a critical issue. And we believe that there are alternatives, and we're hoping that Newport Beach will follow the other cities in Orange County and others that we've worked across the country with. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And if there are any other speakers, if you could please come forward so I'll make sure we move expeditiously. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Mayor Dixon and members of the City Council. My name is Catherine Young, and I've been a restaurant operator in Costa Mesa for 36 years. My children, I lived in Newport, I live in Newport Beach, though. And I raised my children, and now I have four grandchildren. And that's why I'm here, because I have always been concerned about Roundup and the pesticides that have been sprayed on our food and on our parks and the children's school. And so I've also been concerned about the animals, the dogs. It was shown that the dogs have 10 times more glyphosate in their urine than human. And so for all the speakers that talked about their animals, you could see that the dogs lick and are closer to the ground where it's sprayed. So with that, I will move to the fact that my daughter lives across from Cliff Park. And luckily, we got the email about the spraying, and we had the picture of the spraying. I called my daughter to be sure my grandson did not walk the dogs right after. There was no warning. And even if there is warning, what good does it do? After you spray, and it evaporates up into the atmosphere, and it comes down in rain or mildew, or, and we get it into our environment. So, and then I wondered, you know, we have, we had a very nice presentation, but when I saw that chart, it was like, I wonder who wrote it? Because the information is probably twisted. And then it, through the presentation of other members, it came out, it was produced by the industry. And that's very disappointing when information comes out that cannot be relied upon. And with that, I guess I'll yield my time, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming. Yes, next speaker, please.
Hi, thank you, City Councilman Mayor. My name is Dr. Cheryl Willen. I'm with the University of California Cooperative Extension. I'm part of the University of California Statewide Integrated Pest Management Program. I'm based down in Southern California. I work from Los Angeles to the border. I have been involved with a number of situations like you're presented with at this time. And I gave you some handouts and some additional ones that are in other languages for your constituents to, you're welcome to hand those out as you need, and I have more of those. Essentially, it's about what integrated pest management is. I'm not going to debate the use of pesticides. I hear a lot of people talking about glyphosate in particular, but I understand that there might be consideration of removal of all synthetic pesticides, and I would highly caution about doing a blanket removal. Even the city and county of San Francisco, which is sort of the first ones to do this, I've been doing it since about 1980, still have exemptions for using synthetic pesticides in certain areas. So as the plan is developed and it's monitored, there's a lot of nuances here. And I hear a lot of people citing scientific papers, and there's a lot of nuances in here. With my 30 years of experience and degrees in horticulture and botany, even I don't feel comfortable sometimes developing conclusions about this. So I really caution, again, taking a knee-jerk reaction to some of the testimony here and really looking at this with a very sober and fiscal and health view before you make any strong decisions.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Yes, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dixon and members of the City Council. My name is Damarra Trembauer. I'm the Deputy Agricultural Commissioner overseeing pesticide use enforcement for the County of Orange. I'm here today to speak on the city's compliance history. The Agricultural Commissioner's Office has responsibility for local enforcement of state laws and regulations as they pertain to pesticide usage. Our goal is to ensure that applicators and employers are complying with safety regulations and that they're maintaining proper records. We conducted headquarters inspections on the city of Newport Beach on March 8th, 2017, and on February 27th, 2018. During these inspections, we examined pest control advisor-written recommendations, pesticide usage records, employee training records, and hazard communication, pesticide storage areas, decontamination facilities, emergency medical care planning, and personal protective equipment. The city was found to be fully in compliance on both occasions. The city also licenses its applicators through the California Department of Pesticide Regulation, which goes beyond what is required of the city. This licensing is obtained by examination and maintained through continuing education. In addition, on January 30th, 2019, one of our agricultural inspectors conducted an unannounced field application inspection on one of your city's contractors, who is applying on the medians on MacArthur Boulevard. This application inspection is a 34-point inspection of compliance with laws, regulations, and product label requirements, primarily focusing on worker and bystander safety and on environmental protection. No violations were found during this inspection. On each of these dates, it was a different inspector conducting the inspection as well. In addition, I reviewed the city's pesticide use reports going back two years. Every product that the city uses has a signal word of caution. The signal word of a pesticide is assigned by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and indicates how dangerous a pesticide is to a person who is overexposed on an acute or short-term basis, such as would happen if the product was splashed or spilled on the person. Caution is the least toxic signal word for pesticide labels. The city has adopted an integrated pest management program as required by the National Pollutant Elimination Discharge System, or NPDES, permit. The IPM program that the city uses was developed by the University of California South Coast Research and Extension Center, which is located in Irvine. I am a regulator. I am not making any recommendation for your city's pest control program. I'm only saying that from a regulatory perspective, and to the best of my knowledge, the city of Newport Beach conducts its pest control in a safe and lawful manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mayor Dixon, members of City Council, residents of Newport Beach. My name is Jeff Croy. I'm the Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Ways and Measures for the County of Orange. My office is in part of the Public Works Agency in the County of Orange. And under the jurisdiction of my office comes the pesticide regulation. I'm not here to support or oppose any decision that is made tonight. I just want you to be aware that my office also has an IPM program, an integrated pest management program. We also use a weed steamer, which we recently acquired, and we'll be using that in curb and gutter. We use hand disking in some areas, but we also use formulated pesticides because that is one of our items we have in our toolbox. Now, as my deputy mentioned, we did go through the records, but please understand, we went through the records not only of the city of Newport Beach, we also went through the records of every contractor that has worked for the city of Newport Beach for the last two years. We found no violations. This city is doing it right. However, if pesticides were being applied without labels, that would be a violation. So thank you very much for your program, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for speaking. Yes, if there are any more speakers, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Will Harrison. I'm actually a resident of the city of Irvine. I've been a resident in Southern California for well over 35 years. I'm a licensed pest control advisor. I'm a commercial applicator. I've worked in both conventional and organic farming off and on for the last 25 years. I do business with the city and quite a few different municipalities in the area, and just wanted to make a few comments. I compliment the fact the city has a written, living, integrated pest management program. It's important that you have it. It's important that you work with it and review it. I always tell people, an integrated pest management program points you in the right direction. When you have problems, whether it's insects, diseases, other issues in the city, it's not unlike when your car's broken. When your car breaks down, you want it running again. You want to take it to the mechanic, and you don't tell the mechanic, "My car's broken, but, excuse me, I'm going to go into your toolbox, and I'm going to take out certain tools here, because I don't want you to use those tools." No, actually, you refer that knowledge, information, and expertise that that mechanic has to use the least expensive, most effective way to repair that car. And really, that's what your integrated pest management program should be doing. Not eliminating any one material, but rather taking into consideration what the situation is, what's going to be most effective, and what's going to be best. Now, one word I've heard thrown around a lot today is toxic. How do we define toxic? Ladies and gentlemen, we have products on each and one of your desks here. And that bottle called water, I can give you an example, not by drowning, that people have died from overconsumption of water. Everything we deal with in our daily life is toxic. The organic materials we speak of, and they can be effective, are chemicals. They are poisons. Everything we talk about are economic poisons. And as such, none of these materials can be considered safe. They can be mitigated, they can be managed, but everything we're working with has to be considered, and we need to understand that they are a poison, and we need to work with them. Now, a couple of comments came up about the fact there's several lawsuits, jury trials that have come about. One thing we all need to remember, jury trials never prove nor disprove good science or bad science. They do not prove science whatsoever. Now, one interesting thing that we don't hear talked about much is late last year, with the Ninth Circuit Court in the United States, the state of California was moving to move the manufacturers of glyphosate to put a Proposition 65 warning on their labels. Monsanto sued the state of California. The federal judge that came back and ruled in favor of Monsanto saying it was not required said it would be false and misleading information to put a cancer warning on those labels. And so it was not required. It's not only US EPA, Canada, Japan, Brazil, all do not find glyphosate carcinogenic.
Thank you very much. Very informative. Yes, sir. Any other speakers after this gentleman? Please come forward.
Did I get extra time? I was joking. Mayor Dixon, councilmembers. My name is Dr. John Kabashima with the University of California Cooperative Extension. I have a PhD in entomology, pest management. I've spent most of my career on invasive species that come into the United States and California. I've also developed a lot of the IPM programs for the current pests that many of us are dealing with. The one thing that I kind of got out of this whole afternoon is that there seems to be this misunderstanding of synthetics and organics. Synthetics and organics are all chemicals. So I really think that that makes it black and white, and as we know, the world is mostly gray. So when we think about chemicals, we just need to address them and treat them equally. So when you look at all of the research that's done on toxicology and environmental impacts, you need to be fair, and you need to treat synthetics the same as you do organics. There was a comment made that there's a systemic herbicide that came out and has a 24B registration that was fast-tracked, and they didn't have to go through all of this toxicology. I'm really concerned about that. Because in toxicology, what we say is the dosage makes the poison, as Will said. Everything out there is potentially a poison. It's your exposure to it, the dosage, and how much, over time, you are exposed to. Now, I think that the presentation actually was quite excellent. There is this tendency to disparage charts, depending on who gave you that chart. But there's also the ability, when someone produces something like that, for people to analyze it. As a scientist who's worked a lot in toxicology, I can say that that chart really wasn't that bad. You can go back and you can check all that data. You can fact-check it. If you don't think it's accurate, check it. You're going to find that that was actually very accurate. We are bombarded with carcinogens. That's why there's over 900 on Prop 65. You eat fries, you have acrylamides. Coffee has over 1,000 chemicals in it. But many of these natural compounds, I mean, you know, you find coffee, et cetera, there is things like antibiotics and other chemicals that are produced or in that. And when you eat it, your body is being bombarded with carcinogens and being bombarded with things that actually protect you from those. We have an immune system, and that immune system is bombarded with thousands of milligrams of toxic materials, and maybe a fraction of a thousandth of that, of things that can harm you. It's not as simple as this is bad and this is good. And the last thing I want to say is that there was a comment about the HLB and ACP, and that you can't culture the bacteria in the lab. That's very common. We have that all the time. That's why we use DNA. So now, with many, many of these vector disease complexes, we have techniques that allow us to determine that without having to raise it in a Petri dish. And so the science has advanced to that level now, where we do know that that bacteria is causing that, and we do know that that insect is vectoring that bacteria. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Seeing none? Well, this has been a very informative presentation. I do have some comments up here waiting to speak. Mr. Heardman? You're off? Okay, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. First off, to the young students who are here this afternoon, thank you for attending. Hopefully you will see the most effective advocacy is not anger, or condescension, but really reasoning with people, making your case. I thought you all did a very good job of doing so. Your parents are proud of you, I'm sure, and thank you for coming today. In my opinion, which is limited, these results are still inconclusive, and the jury is still out on the harmfulness of, or potential harmfulness of, some of these items. The need to decrease the use of pesticides, in my opinion, is still a good goal. I believe essentially that the residents of Newport Beach deserve a choice. So, I would support integrating organic management at select locations, and those locations where perhaps it's not done now, or maybe will never be done, just be marked so that people were aware of the pesticide use. I put this item up because I thought of my newborn son, and if I knew which park was free of pesticides, more likely the park I would choose to spend time with him. So, thank you, staff. I know this is a tough subject. There is a slight cost increase for the areas where it's done, and it's more work for you, and I'm sorry to put that on you, but I think it's worthy, I think enough residents want it. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
This is called a study session for a really good reason, because we've gotten a lot of information here that we need to think about and talk about and come up with the best possible solution that we can for our residents. I have a question for Dave about, is it our subcontractors or Park West that are responsible for putting up the signs, warning people when this is being sprayed? And is there a possibility that they're not being as fastidious about that as they should be?
Yes, thanks, council member. A couple of thoughts on that when I was listening to the presentation. Again, I thank all you for going through that, because education, what a process is, is good for people to see that we don't reach for the spray bottle first, we do a lot. We do post, and Dan can speak to that and his staff, there probably are cases where people see spraying that hasn't been posted, and I think Mike and Dan both said, "It's not required, it's something we do." So, maybe we failed to catch a couple spots, and I can't say we always get it right, but I was also thinking that there are a lot of other people spraying in the city that we don't control. The comments made about maybe in front of Smart and Final, we know that there are commercial operators that spray in front and take care of their own weeds, we know that the big landowners and the HOAs also spray. You may be seeing other people spray besides city contractors. To your question, yes, we use contractors in our city, and Dan could probably speak best to that, because they run that program. I know they do extensive training, they're all certified, and of course, some of them operate independently in the field, but they are told what to do and trained what to do. And Dan, do you have any comments on that? Not to put you on the spot.
Not at all, Director Webb. Thank you very much. I do also want to thank all the speakers, the children and teenagers, very commendable, the non-toxic folks that we did invite here. I really appreciate Vanessa and Kim for coming. I have been working with them for over three years on this. This is nothing new. I want to thank all, some of the professors that came, and even Will from Target Chemical Company. Thank you very much, it's very important. We do post at parks, but a lot of times, there are several entrances to a park, and so we might hit the main entrances, but people do get into the parks sometimes, obviously, and might not see a posting. We have been posting regularly right now. The folks here, Jennifer Rani and other folks, have approached our contractors while they're spraying, and have shown the same vigor that they have shown here to our contractors. But our contractors are people. You saw that, I have over $5 million worth of contracts that I manage in this city, larger than most departments. My subdivision manages that type of money that's larger than most departments. I have over 80 to 100 individual people from all my contractors that come into this town every day. I have a staff of 10 folks, and we're out there along. And I also want to thank the Agriculture Commissioner for coming tonight and speaking as well, not only on the Asian citrus salad, but reflecting our good record here in the city. I'm very proud of that. I am also a pest control advisor, so I write the recommendations for our city staff. We only have a couple city staff now, and we don't use a whole lot of chemical in the city anymore. Most of my staff are relegated to inspecting the folks. Out of my staff, I have 10 staff members left, including myself. Eight of us are qualified applicators. I'm also a pest control advisor. I also have five certified arborists on staff. You have one of the most trained landscape staffs in the entire county, and we continue to do that. I have trained succession, because I am leaving in 30 days, and so I don't want to leave the city hanging with certain things. And so, I've been very diligent in the last 14 years on training staff to better themselves, to better the organization. So, I know that was more to your question, Councilmember Brenner, but I also, I wanted to acknowledge the folks here. Thank you very much.
One more thing. I would like to see us further reduce the use of glyphosate in areas like sidewalks and places where dogs are sniffing. I think our residents would be tolerant of a little bit more weeds than they would of us continuing to use that in the places where the dogs are sniffing around. And I think if we could, I know you try all the time, but I really think that that, because it is not accepted in Europe and a lot of countries, I just think it's something we can't risk using any more than we absolutely have to. So, I know you've been trying to do that already, but I would just say that even if we had to tolerate a few more weeds, and perhaps we need to talk to our dog owners and our residents about pulling weeds when they see them, because the more weeds we can get rid of naturally, then the fewer opportunities there are for our pest management people to have to spray those areas. So I do think we need to continue our efforts to really limit that in every way possible. And I know, Dave, you and I have talked about the bee population, and how important the bee population is, and so from that standpoint also, we want to make sure that we don't use any more chemicals than necessary. You said you had even investigated the possibility of us increasing the bee population.
Yes, actually, bees come under our pesticide management program, and actually, I pointed to Dan Serrano, he's done extensive work there, and they have contractors to remove hives when they come in, and we do a non-lethal first, we try to relocate the hive somewhere else. Worst cases, we'll have to destroy the hive if it's in a problematic area. I would say behind the scenes, there's credit, again, Dan and I actually met when Concordia went out and looked at the beehives, and we're looking for ways to encourage more beehive aviaries in our city. I know we have some regulations there, but just to show that staff really knows this, and it's working on an organics base first, before we go to that pesticide, so.
Thank you, Mr. Heardman.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, I compliment you on your passion, your expertise, what you've given this city for the last, what, 30 years. Wish you the best. I'm probably not going to be real popular for what I'm going to say right now. I was very impressed with the presentation, the work that's going on in our city right now, the attention, concentration on products that you use to maintain landscaped areas and non-landscaped areas in our city. Most of our speakers tonight were from Irvine and Costa Mesa. We had three speakers from the City of Newport Beach, people that live in this city. Up until Thursday, I had absolutely no idea that this was going to be on the agenda. I doubt if there are many people in this community that knew this was going to be discussed tonight. And before any decisions are made, we have to do a much better job reaching out to the community on this issue, and hearing from the public. Thank you.
Any other comments up here? All right, let me sum up. It is a study session, so we're not recommending any action. I just, again, to echo my colleagues, thank you. A very well-done, balanced presentation. I think it has, certainly from my own knowledge level, it's increased my awareness and understanding of the fine programs that we have, and the care and attention and training and diligence and rigor that our staff typically does, and this is exemplary of how we approach projects in our city and responsibility for public safety in our city. One comment I would like to just toss out, you just commented in response to the Smart and Final store, so commercial entities in the community that are subject to what? What does our municipal code say about use of pesticides by...
They're able to use illegal.
Commercial entities, commercial and residential entities.
I think there's not a restriction on any entity, residential, commercial, using a commercially-approved viable weed, insecticide, or anything. They all come with warning labels, they all come with the ability to warn people how to use them, but again, we don't control that, and there is that element out there, there's a lot of folks that use this. And I think we heard that from Micah talking about Costa Mesa, a lot of the homeowners are now going out and using Roundup to spray, where the city used to do that before, and that can be problematic. They tend to sometimes think, "The more I use, the more it works," and we use the least amount, so there is no regulation I know of on that.
I guess if there's one suggestion, I'm not even suggesting this as an action item, but I'd like to explore more public awareness about our municipal program, our own city program, so that all commercial and residential users are informed to the extent that the city is going to protect the health and safety of our residents. I honestly don't know what we do to communicate that, and we may have little brochures and mailers or something like that, but maybe on the city website. And I know, the takeaway I have from this, that Mr. Heardman communicates regularly with his constituents, I have town halls, others are meeting always with our constituents. I think we need to be spreading the word to all users, not just the city services, but all commercial and residential users. I think that's very helpful. So, Ms. Brenner, did you want to say something else?
I do think that we need to have this on a future agenda, so that we could have the people whose kids are using our recreation facilities, have them come down here and talk to us and tell us if they would rather have fields that are not as pristine but lacking chemicals, or whether they would like us to continue to use what we're using, because it really is up to them what we should be doing, and it's not up to us to assume that they're willing to tolerate a certain amount of use of pesticides in order to have perfect fields, so.
Well, if I may, that was the purpose of today, to have a study session to open it up. If we say put it on an agenda, then we're going to be asking staff to do what specifically?
I think we have to decide whether we're going to continue to maintain our fields at that pristine level, or whether we're going to decide that we would rather tolerate some imperfection and use less chemical on those plain fields.
All right, I guess I'm trying to think, what do we do next? Are we asking staff to come back with a revised program, notwithstanding today's discussion about a balanced presentation of what we're doing? Is there a sense up here that we want to direct staff to come up with a program to do any more than what we're currently doing? Mr. Heardman, you're shaking your head, no?
Let's have a town hall.
All right.
Let's invite people, have them come up here, talk to us.
Which is another study session, if you will, we could have a community-wide town hall?
Yes.
Sure, all right. Are you comfortable with that? Let's hear from people, is what you're saying.
That's right, from our residents.
Yeah, that's a great idea. All right, we all agree with that? We'll have a community town hall? What I would like to see, just as what we've done a little bit today for an hour and a half, we had a balanced presentation. I know I've been informed, I think you have informed the community. I think hearing both sides of the issue, on any issue, is always valuable, and I think to continue to educate our community of what we as a city are doing for our own public property is helpful. We'll talk with staff about how we go to the next step. We're specifically not asking for any staff action, we're looking just to how we continue to educate the community and hear from the community in return. Okay? Okay. All right, well, thank you all for your coming today and giving your time to share with us your thoughts and opinions on pest management. And moving on, we now are going to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. So this is agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward.
My name is Bruce Ibbetson, a board member at the Newport Aquatic Center. Mayor Dixon, members of the council, appreciate your time and the opportunity to address you. I want to reinforce the facts and the truth about the NAC. The mess as you know it at the NAC is not about whether you love Billy Whitford or not. It's not about dismantling any programs or denying access to anyone. It's not about Bruce and Donna trying to take over the NAC. It's all a false narrative that was promoted by Whitford and the other board members. This has always been about financial fraud, about missing money, lack of governance, and members' right to vote. I'm sorry the city's involved in this mess, but you can't look the other way any longer. You own the property and it's subject to a ground lease. This involves children and missing money on city land. We thank you for the new city council policy F7 that you passed a couple weeks ago. We also ask you to act now due to the many violations that have occurred under your ground lease. We ask you not to wait four more years when this lease expires and the new council policy F7 becomes applicable to the property. These people will go right back to the same bad acts as soon as the city stops watching. Their only response has been to deny and delay. They even filed a motion in the appellate court, trying to have our civil fraud case thrown out, saying it infringes on their First Amendment right of free speech. This wonderful asset belongs to the community, and not to a few people that are power-hungry. Donna will provide a few examples of their continued misinformation. Thank you again for your time.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Dixon and council members, I'm Donna Warwick, board member of NAC. We've turned in our response to the February 14 letter from Aaron Harp, and we hope that you have a chance to look at it. We believe that when you compare Bruce Ibbetson's and my response to the allegations, and compare them with the other board members' responses, you'll better understand the details and facts as to why we're not backing down for the sake of the community and kids. Every day that goes by that the wrongdoing isn't corrected is another day the kids in the community will be hurt. We have seen the price the kids and the members have paid over the years. I'm going to leave a document with you that compares the rest of the board's responses to ours, or just a few of the 41 allegations. Our responses are based on facts and evidence, and we know you will be able to see for yourself side by side how factual and legitimate our concerns are. We hope you will spend some time to familiarize yourself with what we have seen as board members, which is without the help of discovery and depositions. I'm going to just talk about one, I know you guys are tired, but one of the examples that we have in this document is about the spy mic. In their document that they returned to you on March 15, they claim the spy mic was not hidden but in plain sight. The actual reality of the spy mic is that it's the size of a pencil eraser. It was bored into the white acoustical ceiling tile and covered with white perforated tape to hide the black head, which is about a quarter inch in diameter. I think you can see the nature of their responses versus ours and the actual reality of what really occurred. Our simple goal is to ensure the valuable community asset remains viable and can be enjoyed by its members and generations to come. We appreciate the passage of the F7 policy. We hope the city will look at what we've already found occurring at the NAC, and we ask that you not wait four more years to enforce best practices and good governance at the NAC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda, our agenda items, please?
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier, and I don't know if you're going to have time to actually handle most of your closed-session items that you have coming up. I wanted to note that Item C seems to be about the city negotiating to purchase some of the private buildings that are associated with the Balboa Ferry. This is the second time it's been on the closed-session agenda, and I really think the public deserves to know what that negotiation is about. I have no idea why we'd be buying those buildings. And I noticed the item after that is the public employee performance evaluation for our city attorney and our city clerk. What I wanted to say about that is the... What I wanted to say about that is the last couple of times it's been on the agenda, there's been an announcement that the people being evaluated are recusing themselves because the evaluation might affect their compensation. I thought that's the whole idea of the evaluation, and I would hope you're actually talking to the people who you're evaluating in the closed session. And the other aspect of that is I think their performance evaluation, according to their contracts, is supposed to be based on whether they've attained the goals that you set for them. In the contract, you're supposed to set goals each year. I've spoken about this many times before. We have the peculiarity in Newport Beach that the public does not know what the goals of our public employees are. I can contrast this with the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, which I and many other people in Newport Beach happen to live in. On Thursday night, their board will be meeting and they will be publicly setting the goals, there will be 13 of them that they're going to discuss publicly, for their general manager to achieve during the coming year. And come next January, we will see whether he achieved them or not, that will be publicly disclosed, and they might then meet in closed session to discuss the compensation that would go with that. It's a different system, I think a better one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, agenda or non-agenda items? And seeing none, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. The city council will adjourn to closed session to discuss items 4A through E, including meeting with the city manager, assistant city manager, and human resources director to discuss labor negotiations with the Newport Beach Fire Management Association. The city council will not be meeting regarding the part-time employee association unit, which is listed on the agenda. The council will also meet with legal counsel to discuss anticipated litigation by the union and individual listed under agenda item number 4B, that's related to the Flores versus City of San Gabriel decision. They'll be meeting with real property negotiators, the city manager, and Lauren Whittlinger to provide them direction regarding negotiations with Seymour Beak regarding the properties located at 406, 408, and 410 South Bayfront. The council will also meet to discuss the performance of the city attorney and city clerk. And finally, the council will meet with Mayor Dixon and Mayor Protim O'Neill, discuss labor negotiations with the council. I'm sorry, did I say something wrong?
No, no, we're just saying we've got a lot of work to do.
With the council appointees.
Your time is up.
Including the city manager, city clerk, and city attorney, and the council appointees will recuse themselves from the labor negotiation portion just because it impacts our financial interests.
Okay, we are resourced until 7:00 PM. Yep. Okay, are we on? There we go. Well, good evening, everyone, sorry for the little delay. We just got into the closed session after a long study session. So, the meeting is now convened for the regular session of March 26, city council meeting, Newport Beach. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, is our closed session report.
Just briefly, the city council was unable to get to items 4D and E, and they'll take those up at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
All right, this evening, we have an invocation by Mr. McLaughlin of the Second Church of Christ Scientists, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Brenner, please.
Either one.
Is this one?
That's fine, thank you.
Do you want the Pledge of Allegiance first, or the invocation?
We'll do your invocation first, please.
Hello, my name's Patricia McLaughlin, Pat McLaughlin, and I'm a member of the Christian Science Church in Corona del Mar, and I'm serving as the president right now of Arlay Church. Thank you for inviting us to participate. I will read a poem called "Love," written by the discoverer and founder of Christian Science, Mary Baker Eddy. Brewed oars with thy sheltering wing, neath which our spirits blend, like brother birds that soar and sing and on the same branch bend. The arrow that doth wound the dove darts not from those who watch and love. If thou the bending reeds wouldst break by thought or word unkind, pray that his spirit you partake, who loved and healed mankind. Seek holy thoughts and heavenly strain, that make men one in love remain. Learn too that wisdom's rod is given for faith to kiss and know, that greetings glorious from high heaven whence joys supernal flow. Come from that love divinely near, which chastens pride and earth-born fear through God, who gave that word of might which swelled creations' lay. Let there be light, and there was light; what chaste the clouds away? 'Twas love whose finger traced aloud, a bow of promise on the cloud. Thou to whose power our hope we give, free us from human strife. Fed by thy love divine we live, for love alone is life, and life most sweet, as heart to heart, speaks kindly when we meet and part. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I speak to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
All right, city council announcements, new items, council members would like to be introduced for a future agenda, and oral reports from city council on committee activities. Start with Mr. Avery.
I have none.
Mr. Duffield.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Am I, okay. I attended the Executive Watershed Committee meeting last week, and what they do is manage the property from saddleback all the way to the water. And what I can report is, obviously, these rains that we've experienced means sediment movement. In other words, sand is filling up our harbor. And upstream, so I want you to all know, that deep basins or holes were dug out purposely to keep the sediment away from our harbor. We don't know how these basins performed this winter until the report comes back to us in September. However, the good news is, we had some heavy rains in 2016, and we went to measure the sediment amounts, and they were very little, if any, at all. So that means that it was working. And in my lifetime, I've watched these rain events fill our harbor up like crazy, and the good news is that this watershed, not the committee, the management committee, not us, but works very, very hard, and they're very experienced at helping us keeping this sand out of our harbor. So I'm very excited about the possibility that we will not have a whole bunch of sand. Having said that, I also went to a harbor visioning meeting that was put on, and the Harbor Commission Subcommittee for this harbor visioning put on a fabulous, successful, and productive meeting last week. And I want to congratulate Paul Blank and Scott Cunningham for coming up with a great method of understanding what the public is concerned about on the harbor. Everyone got to put his or her suggestions to all the topics that were presented. Rather than speaking, the crowd was given index cards so they could write down their suggestions, concerns, or ideas. Staff collected all the cards, and in the process summarized the meeting for all of it, and they are currently in the process of summarizing the meeting for all of us to see. Paul and Scott plan on several more of these visioning events for our harbor, and when they are finished, we will have a great list of items to work with. And I just want to go, I just really want to thank Scott and Paul for such a creative and successful harbor vision meeting. It's a great example of how volunteers on committees in our city can put forth such amazing energy for a great cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
I have none.
I'm Ms. Brenner. Yes, I, let's see, we attended the Solid Waste and Recycling City Council Working Group, which is a fascinating group, and we're going to be learning a lot more about how we as citizens are going to have to do a lot more recycling in our future as mandated by the state. I also met with Deb Johnson of Second Chance, Orange County, a CDBG grant recipient, which helps recovering addicts and alcoholics or those experiencing homelessness by providing assistance with job skills, life skills, resume creation, mental health therapy, and job placement. Within the last few months, they've helped five of our Newport Beach homeless individuals, three got jobs and temporary housing, one of these got custody back of her child and has remained sober for over six months. That was really inspiring. Several of us attended the Speak Up Newport meeting to hear members of our Newport Beach Police Department talk about current technologies that are helping to solve not only cold cases but enhance the abilities of our police department today. I attended the Corona del Mar Chamber Good Morning Meeting to hear Sherry Frederenrick, Orange County Treasurer-Tax Collector, speak about the financial state of Orange County. We learned a great deal about how our county taxes are spent, and also that as of last July, we are officially finished with the Orange County bankruptcy. Their next meeting is April 11 at 7:30 AM at Bahia Corinthian Yacht Club. I had previously met with the Bay Shores homeowners who were appealing the Marina Project, and last week I met with Ron and Allison Priestah. I attended the Finance Committee meeting, I also attended the 1-1 Marines Foundation Strategic Partners Annual Reception, which was, of course, inspiring. And Grace and I had the pleasure of going to the spirit run and judging the costume contest, so that was really fun that morning. Sally Jeff and I attended a lovely reception put on by the Newport Beach Public Libraries Foundation to welcome new CEO Meg Linton at the home of Karen and Bruce Clark. I also did a tour of our Municipal Operations Center on Superior, and am continually impressed at the expertise and dedication of our city staff. After that, we visited several sites which are part of our water, wastewater quality efforts. Most impressive was the joint project that is funded by Dave, is it city funds, Measure M funds, and can you tell us what the different funds are that are going into that project that's so impressive?
Are you referring to the Santa Ana-Delhi Channel?
Yes.
We have settlement funds, we have city funds, we have multi-city funds, agencies of Santa Ana, Costa Mesa, Newport Beach, County of Orange. We also have Measure M grant funds, and that project is on the screen there.
That was very impressive. I also did a city hall tour and interview with Boy Scout Connor Stevens, and Will, Jeff, and I always attend the Corona del Mar Residents Association Monthly Board Meeting to keep our constituents updated. These meetings are held on the third Thursday of most months at 7:30 at Oasis, but this coming month, on April 17, we have a meeting at the Sherman Gardens. It's the annual meeting for the CDMRA and the bid, starts at 5:00 with an expo and social meeting, and then at 6:00 PM, there is a regular meeting of the entire group. I also attended the last two Public Policy Making Academy classes at UCI, and I have to say I'm glad I'm not still in college. Those were long days, but we heard great information from Orange County Vector Control and the Transportation Corridors Agencies, and the vector control presentation was really interesting, and I was going to ask Jeff, I spoke with Grace about possibly inviting them to come to one of our future study sessions to make a presentation on mosquitoes, because there's a lot of things that we as citizens need to be doing in that area. So Jeff, if you could invite them. And finally, last Friday, I attended the Orange Coast College New Planetarium opening, the very first show that they presented, and I believe they're going to have like three shows a day, and it was really interesting, so it's open to the public.
Mr. Hurdman.
Thank you. Vector Control, we're starting, when I say we, I am a member of the County Vector Control Board of Directors now, so you can expect me each council, at one of each council meeting a month to make an announcement about vector control. On April 1, they're starting what they call a tip and toss campaign kickoff, and you're encouraged to take an active role in mosquito control by regularly inspecting your property and tipping and tossing. Tipping standing water and tossing it, plant saucers, buckets, pet water bowls, trash cans, do it now, do it now, and reduce mosquito population when the weather warms up. Joy mentioned a couple of things that I was already going to mention. I continue to represent the city council at Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Monthly Meetings. We continue to hold our aviation/airport messaging and strategy meetings on a weekly basis here in the city. I attended an update on the Coal Center project and saw a whole new, completely revised project that is going to be presented. And then I took a field trip at the invitation of the Director of ACI Jet. I visited their fixed-based operation and/or their terminal at John Wayne Airport, got a tour of that, and an explanation and a firsthand view of how this terminal operates. And then for a future agenda item, I would like to see the council consider reinstatement of the Public Arts and Cultural Fund that was derived from developer agreement funds. That fund was eliminated with the purchase of the Lido Fire Station property, and I'd like us to reconsider reinstating that fund. Thank you.
Mayor Protim.
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I represent the city on the Board for the Transportation Corridor Agencies, and just so everyone on the council hears it, there are two boards, there's the San Joaquin Board and there's the Foothill Board. San Joaquin, for the most part, is at the 73, Foothill, for the most part, is the 241. 241 Extension is the one that makes the news all the time. Newport Beach does not sit on the Foothill Eastern Board, and the reason that's important is because I just want everyone to know, I've been assured that in recent weeks, the TCA has been in the news over contracts with PR outside consultants dealing with potential billing irregularities, as the LA Times, I think, would put it. And I just want you to know, I've been assured the San Joaquin Board does not have a contract with any of the folks specifically referenced in those LA Times articles. The other is, I attended the Nauruze Festival this past weekend in Irvine with my daughter, and that was, I've done that before, if you haven't done it, it's fantastic, it really is a great expression of a lot of cultural heritage, and so if you haven't done it, please do in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I have a few announcements as well. Last week, I spent two days in Sacramento with other electeds from Orange County, about 20 cities in Orange County, with ACCOC, known as Associated California Cities of Orange County, and this is an annual Sacramento trip. You've heard me talk about it. You've heard me talk about our Washington trip. And these trips are really useful to get in front of our elected representatives in Sacramento to hear what they have planned in their legislative agendas and for us to be more informed and consider how we will, how we think about some of those new policies. And if you've been following along in the paper, there's a lot, there are probably over 50 bills already introduced since January related to housing, affordable housing, housing construction. And so we're going to be seeing and involved in a lot of activity that the state is now directly inserting itself into the province of local government. So it's going to be an interesting territorial challenge here between state and local government as we go forward. We did talk about homelessness, affordable housing, tax increases, proposed tax increases. Sacramento is on a roll here, looking for ways to bring in money. And public pensions, which continues to be an issue important to all of us, water quality, water safety, and reliability. So a lot of things going on in Sacramento. It is going to be very newsworthy for a lot of reasons going forward. Back home, on March 8th, I attended the Environmental Nature Center's construction project for their new preschool that will be on their property at the Environmental Nature Center. It's like a school in the woods. It's just really going to be incredible. And it'll be new to our community. And it really is just a credit to Bo Glover, who's the Executive Director of the ENC and their board, for raising entirely private donations. City funds are not involved in this great new adventure in the woods in our community. So the ENC campus, a preschool, will be open for business and new students in the fall, in September. I had a lot of fun last Friday, I guess it was. There's the, across the country is the mayor's drive for meals. And so I went, Oasis participates in this because we have a regular, the city has a regular ongoing program administered through Oasis to serve our seniors who are homebound to ensure that they get three meals a day. And so it's a single delivery to the seniors, and there are about 225 seniors in our community who participate in this program. And so each delivery, they get their three meals at midday. So they get their warm meal at midday, and then they have a dinner, and then the breakfast for the next morning. And it's just a wonderful, wonderful experience because the seniors, you walk in and they know their regular delivery person. And so I was added to that experience and they were thrilled. And it was just, my tears, my eyes watered, just these people are so happy and that they have the companionship with the meal service, the Meals on Wheels people. And it's, some people don't, some seniors don't get visitors, but the person who brings their meals is their friend. And it's just really a heartwarming experience. I loved it. Did you have a slide up there for that? I thought, I remember seeing a slide. So you'll see that in a moment. So that was, the group that we, Oasis contracts with, it's called Age Well Senior Services. And they've been serving the city and Oasis for a number of years. So it really is a special program. Also, I don't think I have a slide on this, but I agreed as mayor to participate in the Mayor's Water Challenge for cities to, is there something there? I don't know, to conserve water, which may seem like an oxymoron with all the rain we've had. However, really the specific message of continuing to serve water, this mayor's challenge has been going on across the country for many, for a number of years, is that we cannot be lulled into complacency just because there are lots of water that has been absorbing into our ground, to our grounds, that once, once the rain stops, we need to remember to conserve water. And it's a national community campaign to inspire residents and businesses to make a series of informative and easy-to-do online pledges to use water more efficiently and to reduce energy use and pollution. And so it's raising awareness, so you'll be seeing a little bit more in our community. And the challenge runs from April 1st to April 30th. And anyone can go to mywaterpledge.com. And it really helps the city nationally in this campaign to see how many residents, just sign up. That's all you have to do is sign up to be conscious of saving water. So it's pretty easy, but it's really important. April 6th, Saturday, April 6th, Supervisor Michelle Steele and I will be co-hosting, oh, I'll get to that in a moment, co-hosting our joint town hall on John Wayne Airport Issues, presented by Supervisor Michelle Steele, Saturday, April 6th, 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. The home base will be in the community room, but there have been so many signups, there also will be a screen here, and then maybe even chairs out there. I think over 300 people are signed up to attend. A lot of people in our community care about some recent changes going on at John Wayne, current and prospective proposed changes. And so our community wants to be involved and have a voice in these proposed changes. And then there is a slide on an organic compost giveaway. So the city and CRNR Environmental Services are holding an organic compost giveaway on same day, Saturday, April 6th, from 9 to 11, while supplies last, up at Big Canyon Reservoir at Pacific View Drive in Corona del Mar. And Newport Beach residents who receive trash collection service via CRNR will receive a postcard in the mail. So bring in the postcard to collect your two free bags of compost. So we do provide important gifts to our community. We also have a shred event. We're very conscious of our environment here. It's spring and time to start clearing out your old documents for secure shredding. And the city and CRNR's next shred event is Saturday, May 11th, so mark your calendar, 8 a.m. to noon or until the trucks are full. The last time we did that, there was oversubscribed, so they had to do a makeup session. So we are a very conscious community in shredding our items that are no longer needed. They've become so popular, oh, I should have read this further, they've become so popular that limits need to be placed on the event. So it's only for residents. And I talked about the town hall, and I talked about senior services, and I think I've given all my announcements. So, yes, Mr. Duffield.
So I just wanted to announce a very, very hugely important thing that has happened today. My sister from Oregon came Lake Oswego, all the way down to this meeting. I told her it was on TV, and she wouldn't have to come here, but there she is with my wife.
Welcome.
Lake Oswego, Oregon. Wow. I think she came because she doesn't really believe I'm here.
This was instead of going out to dinner? Welcome. Did you say Oregon? She's from here. Well, very good. Well, welcome to Newport Beach. Thank you for coming this evening. All right. So we did have one item that council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. Is there anything else?
Not for tonight.
Not for tonight. But the one we're doing tonight is, we need three council members to raise their hands if they support bringing back Mr. O'Neill's request of a potential revision of Marine Avenue tree trimming cycle.
And I have to recuse myself on this because of real property interest.
All right.
That's unanimous, 6-0.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
This is time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 14. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members are received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
I omitted the public comments on items that the council announced or oral reports. So if anyone has a public comment on any item that any of us announced, please come forward or forever hold your peace. Okay? So we'll move right into the consent calendar. Council, any items to pull? Mr. Avery.
I have none.
Mr. Duffield.
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon.
Ms. Brenner.
Recuse myself on item 9 because of real property interest.
All right, Mr. Hurdman.
Yes, I'd like to pull item 14 and item number four. And I have to recuse myself from item number nine because of real property interests.
Mayor Protem.
None.
All right, do you have a motion?
Yes, I will move the balance of the consent calendar with items four and 14 pulled by Council Member Hurdman and number nine showing a recusal from Council Member Brenner and Council Member Hurdman.
And just briefly, we circulated amended resolution for item number six. If you include that in the motion.
So included.
All right, public comments.
I'm sorry, we need.
Oh, I'm sorry, a second. All right, we have a second. Any public comments on the consent calendar? Any none? Any council comments on the consent calendar? All right, let's vote.
Oh, okay. My apologies, that's 7-0 unanimously. Is that it?
All right, so we'll go into item number four. Is that what you?
Yes, yeah. Item number four, the formation of the Newport Beach Homeless Task Force. I'm in, looking over attachment A, which describes the authorization, the membership, the qualifications, the term, the meetings, and the purpose and responsibilities. I would like to see under purpose and responsibilities, two items added. And an E, which would require this committee, or this task force, to report back to the council on a periodic basis so we know what kind of progress they're making and what kind of work they're doing. And then possibly an F to review and support the housing element program within the general I understand that there's approximately $800,000 sitting in a fund that might support this committee's work that was not expended last year. And Grace, you're giving me a puzzled look. It's, actually, it's in item number 14, the General Plan Status Report on Housing Element Annual Progress Report. Not all of the monies that were set aside to help out in the way of affordable housing and seniors making repairs on their homes and that type of thing was spent last year. At least, that's my understanding after reading this report. So F would be a review and support, review and support the housing element program within the general plan. That's what I'm suggesting be added, those two elements.
With a focus, may I clarify, with a focus on homelessness? Is that what you?
Yes, yes. Of cour, yeah, of course.
Is that different distinction from affordable housing? Because the general plan process will be looking at that aspect of affordable housing. But homelessness, because you, no, I'm really not clear what you want to do.
I'm just thinking that there are funds available that could be used to support the work of this task force.
Okay.
That's what I'm.
Oh, all right. Okay, that's something a little bit different, funds.
So review and research, housing element sources of funding.
Funding, okay, it's a funding issue. Grace, does that sound like familiar to you? Because I know there have been, in the past, we've used funds, like for the Cove Veterans Affordable Housing Facility over in West Newport.
Sure, yeah, there's different kinds of housing development mitigation fees, CDBG fees certainly are used towards homeless services. So they, as part of the task force, could look at the different funding sources that we have available and.
Okay, that seems good.
That money is available each year. We budget for it, so.
All right, okay, so is that in the form of a motion?
I would like to make a motion that those two items be added, yes, to the purpose and responsibilities of the homeless task force.
We have a second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a little bit. I have no problem with E. F gets a little bit specific into areas that are going to be difficult to tackle. I find F to be well within A, which is develop strategies and plan to integrate all services needed to address homelessness. And so I just want to, I'd like to just shy away from the term general plan as much as I can while we're actually updating the general plan so as not to accidentally cross over. But I do view the funding sources as well within A and would anticipate the discussion being certainly on affordable housing, given that that's the, that's what we've had in place for a while now is Affordable Housing Task Force that Brad and I are both on. And so now we're creating the homelessness task force. It's a, it does take into account affordable housing, I can assure you. I just would prefer not to have the, if you wouldn't mind.
No, I'll revise my motion then just to include an E, which is to report back to the council on a periodic basis.
Absolutely.
And I will follow up, though, on the funding. There are, one focus of the housing, excuse me, the homeless task force would be, look at other external sources of funds, state funds, except, and county funds.
That's exactly right, especially given the, especially given the Housing Trust and other things like that. So that's why my thought is just.
That's included in A.
Your purview will include that as well.
Yes, internal and external.
All right, let's take it out to the public. Any comments on item four with the suggested motion?
Good evening. My name is Ruth Sanchez Kobayashi, and I'm a longtime resident of Newport Beach. So it's appropriate to make a comment at this time on the homeless task force? Is that correct? Thank you. Thank you for serving our community. It's not an easy job, and your willingness to put yourself out there and make a difference is truly appreciated. I commend your efforts to address homelessness by forming a task force. It's clear that like all of us, you care for the well-being of the homeless population. It is my hope that part of your efforts will be to include addressing how this growing problem impacts all of us. We continue to see a growing number of addicted and mentally ill people loitering, panhandling, leaving trash and belongings, and degrading everyone's quality of life. On this side of town, two locations are providing attractive gathering places. The county bus terminal right up the street has become a full-time loitering zone and campground with folks spending a lot of time along Avocado, PCH, and San Miguel, and the neighboring shopping centers. Off of Jamboree, near where I live, across the street from my favorite police department, one of our churches with the best of intentions is attracting a growing number of folks who take the bus, come and go, loiter and leave trash and belongings a few hundred feet from the two schools. Our city continues to contribute a generous sum of money to fund this program, thereby contributing to this problem. A problem that has been growing in its attention at the high school, the PTA, and with the neighbors. Costa Mesa has taken bold action to provide shelter beds as part of an arrangement to allow them to enforce their laws without fear of litigation. Will Costa Mesa's ability to now enforce their laws cause more homeless folks to come into our city? And are we ready for that? Can we agree that this growing challenge for all communities must balance the needs of all the members of the community? At this point, for many of us, it feels as though the impact on quality of life in Newport Beach can be addressed more assertively. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Any none?
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, item 14, Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, this is just a request. I received my agenda on Thursday. I sat down with my agenda Thursday evening and started going through it. And I came across item number 14 here, which is the General Plan Status Report and Housing Element Annual Progress Report. First of all, to Melinda Whalen, a compliment on an excellent job done on this report. However, it is quite lengthy. And I would simply like to request that when we get detailed items like this that require a few days possibly of reading and digesting and understanding, that we get them more than three days before we are asked to approve them. All right? And I spoke with Grace about this, and she said that's very possible. I can't remember the terminology used, but that, so that's all I'm, that's all I'm asking for, is that we just be given time to read and digest this stuff before we're asked to approve it. Otherwise, I will make a motion to approve the 2018 General Plan Status Report and Housing Element Annual Progress Report.
You have a second.
I'll second.
I do, one, just make a comment, since Mr. Hurdman brought this up, we all, obviously, We all obviously read it, and I assume many, many members of our community may have read this item. What I appreciated was, it was taken directly out of our current general plan, the first part of it, the housing element, and I, and because we are going through the general plan update process, it was an excellent opportunity, it still is an excellent opportunity, for interested citizens to take that section of our general plan, the 2006 general plan, and that is what we will be updating or in the process will be proceeding to update. So it's a really good, it's a handy document that extracts it out of the full general plan, so it's easy to digest. All right, let's vote.
Oh, hang on, I'm sorry. Public comment also.
Oh, excuse me?
This is a lawyer in me, Jeff. I'm realizing that your motion was on B only, and it didn't include the sequoia determination. So just for clarification, it's.
Just a staff recommendation.
That's my second.
Okay, public comment on item 14, please.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. And in view of the fact that we are embarking on a general plan update, I think this item, which is the general plan status report of our current general plan, is a very instructive item for the public to review. I wish there was more interest in it than there is. The report is very detailed, but in my opinion, the best way to read this is actually to ignore the report and look at the staff report, look at what's copied in the staff report, starting on page 14-8, which is chapter 13 from our current general plan, adopted in 2006 along with the rest of the general plan. It's called the implementation program. Implementation program is a series of promises that the city council, in adopting the general plan, made to the citizens of what we were going to do to keep our general plan current and to do the things that we said we were going to do in the general plan. You hardly have to start with the first page of this, staff report, page 14-8, which shows that each year as we review this, we should be reviewing the implementation plan itself and bringing it up to date. Nothing has been done in the last 12 years to bring the implementation plan up to date annually. It's never been done. You go a couple of pages later, the very first implementation plan, 1.1, you'll see one of the things we are supposed to be doing for the last 12 years is that when neighboring agencies, this would be like the school district or sanitation district or so forth, announce their capital improvement programs, those programs are supposed to be presented to and reviewed by our planning commission to see that they are consistent with the general plan that we adopted. Things like the settlement agreement, the general aviation improvement program are supposed to be reviewed by us for consistency with the policies in our general plan. None of that, to the best of my knowledge, has ever happened. I don't think the planning commission has ever seen the capital improvement program from any of the agencies, including school districts, sanitation, whatever happening in our city. So the report is telling you things that we did to keep promises. It's not telling you many things that we failed to do. In addition to that, one of the state requirements for this report is that it update the public and the state agencies on the degree of compliance of our general plan with the guidelines that they publish. Those were extensively revised two years ago, and you would think that there would need to be an update on how compliant we are with those guidelines. You will not find it in the report. So I do think it's very instructive for the public to look at this. In view of all the money we're spending on a general plan update, we should be interested in the status of our current general plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any comments up here? Mr. Hurdman?
Just one comment. I'm sorry, but I don't agree with you, Jim, about not reading the report itself. A great deal of staff time goes into that, and how do you know if things are being implemented if, in fact, you do not read the report? Thank you.
All right, let's vote.
The motion unanimously carries, seven zero.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers, please limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Andy Corley. Glad to be here. I've never been to a city council meeting, so that means I've never spoken at a city council meeting. I hope that would indicate that I have a concern, but I'm concerned, but I'm open-minded. I want you to know that. I live over on Cliff Drive, and I'm concerned about the traffic that both we currently have and that the Mariners Mile project may change. For some reason, from Irvine Boulevard down to Riverside, that strip of road seems to replace the Indianapolis Speedway most afternoons. And of course, we've had some horrible things happen with schoolchildren, and if you want to see a concerning traffic situation, come by around 2:00 or 2:30, when all the kids are getting out and cars and people are moving at very high speed. So I just want to bring that to your attention. We know that there's going to be development. We know that development can be done properly and can improve the state of the citizenry. I'm in favor of that, but I want it to be done respectfully and carefully, and we're just monitoring, our neighbors and I, or wanted you to bring this to your attention. And that's all I have to say. I will say that, on another note, I grew up in Georgia, so I consider myself an expert on mosquitoes, so if you guys have any questions, just give me a call, okay?
Thank you very much. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Denise Oberman, and I'm a resident and a property owner on the oceanfront of the Balboa Peninsula. I'm here tonight to bring to the council's attention an elevated understanding of the deficient management and controls and the permitting and construction management processes. And my goal tonight is to share with the council and also with the public the adverse impact that the lack of sufficient planning and controls has on individual property rights, safety, and even the integrity of our zoning scheme. By way of example, I've personally been experiencing over the last three and a half years the impact of the lack of controls. There have been, my property, just by way of quick summary, is, it is a small, it's a significant property, but it always had a 36-inch side setback in conformance with the city regulation, as did my neighbors. Some new people bought the property adjacent to me, and without notice, they tore down, while I was at work, my property fence that had existed in the property and overexcavated my land. That was the beginning of a long process. That was in the summer of 2015. I went through multiple discussions, verbal and written communication with various members of the city staff, as well as trying to resolve the problem without having to resort to litigation with my neighbors, none of which were successful. There were multiple facets of city's existing controls that were not administered, and also there were failures to act on a number of things, most of which are in the record, and I can't possibly repeat all of them, but they are in evidence in three minutes. Just going to give you a couple of examples. The city staff and the planning process did notice in this topographical map that the neighbors had submitted that there was definitely an inconsistency between the record measure and the measured distances in the survey. So the amount was approximately four and a half inches. Well, you can say, okay, well, what's the significance of four and a half inches? Well, on a 36-inch setback that my property has and many other properties have in the city, the difference is quite significant, and it's not mitigatable since structures are already there. One thing is, without the 36 inches and an unobstructive access, there is not an adequate fire and life safety clearance. The other thing is, it deprives one of necessary life conveniences, ability to move furniture, appliances, et cetera. So the bottom line of it is, after the first year, I tried again without success, and the city ultimately issued a certificate of occupancy to my neighbors to take possession of my property without my agreement and against my will. And it was taken in the form of a block wall, which I can't move. I've gone to court, I've done a forensic survey, all of that's gone to the city, and I'm tonight asking the council to help me with a remedy. I would like the council to direct staff to have this, cause this wall to be removed from my property and have my neighbors put it where they allege they put it, which was on their property. And by doing so, the city would restore to me that which it took away, which is the full use and enjoyment and full rights associated with my property and my possession of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and honorable city councilmembers. My name is Peggy Palmer, and I reside at 1701 Kings Road. I've been a resident for more than 30 years in Newport Beach. I want to first of all thank the mayor and the city council for addressing residential construction that extends more than five years in Newport Beach. I'm looking forward to a reasonable cap on the residential construction. As you may know, whenever significant construction takes place, and especially if demolition or excavation works are to be undertaking near neighboring homes or buildings, it is essential that the developer engages with adjoining owners to undertake condition surveys. Here that, condition surveys. In any property that could feasibly be affected by the proposed work prior to starting it, a condition survey will establish the precise state of the property before any work commences and will identify and record any deficiencies in the property, such as cracks or maintenance issues. It will be issued, it will be used as a baseline in the event that works, that cause damage to these adjoining properties. Importantly for the developers, it establishes what liabilities might be incurred by them and any special provisions or limitations they must consider about the way work is carried out. I highly recommend that together we work towards a solution, and a condition survey should be a tool that the city should be utilizing to avoid any further issues. We recently had a demolition next door to my house at 1721 Kings Road, and not one resident in the surrounding area was given any prior notice. The demo commenced on March 13th and concluded on March 18th. During this time, the gutter of the adjacent property fell onto our deck, smashed our railing, shattered glass sprayed our yard, and one of our retaining walls has now been compromised. And I might add that the foundation of the property has not yet been excavated, of which, if not properly removed, will be a detriment to our home. We need to be proactive and demand full disclosure from the applicants and their contractors prior to these demolitions. Most importantly, have approved plans in place. We need to set an example that renegade, that when renegade contractors who do not have a general contractor's license should be required to follow the policies and procedures or consequences will be set forth due to their reckless disregard to the surrounding neighbors. I'm not speaking alone, as many other residents in Newport Beach have us been destabilized, much like our iconic crab cooker. In closing, lastly, I'm requesting that an extensive geological study be conducted, as the city may not know that a significant landslide occurred, my next dorm neighbor occurred in 1960 along the bluff at the same location.
Thank you.
May I give this to Mr. Harv?
Mr. City Attorney. Yes, Mr. Harv, thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll proceed into our public hearing. Item 15, Bay Shore Drive, Newport Marina, is appeal of the Harbor Commission's decision. And Mr. Miller, you'd like to.
Madam Mayor.
Give the staff report? Oh, excuse me. Yes, Mr. DeFoe.
I have to recuse myself because I'm a tenant of the marina.
Okay, well, we will miss you. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My goal tonight is to not belabor the staff report, but rather to give a brief presentation on the highlights of what is proposed and the actions that have been taken to date. Simply, the recommendation would be to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt, modify the Harbor Commission's decision, and adopt resolution 2019-30. Thought just one slide would help us get, orientate ourselves as to how we got here. In 2016, there was a plan submitted to the Harbor Commission, and I'm identifying that plan in parentheses as being a southern entrance to the backside of the marina, and I'll show that graphically in a moment. There was a Harbor Commission decision on that back in 2016, which caused the applicant to rethink their design of their marina. And so therefore, two years later, in 2018, they redesigned their marina, which had a northern entrance to the backside of the marina. This was approved by staff and then appealed to the Harbor Commission in January 19, and the Harbor Commission upheld staff's approval of that project. Then we are here today because that decision was appealed. In the interim, however, the applicant has since redesigned their marina from the Harbor Commission's decision and come up with a mutually acceptable plan that both, that all parties agree on this evening. An aerial view depicting where the marina is in the upper left-hand corner of the screen and zoomed in. This yellow box represents the appellant's, who are the affected property owners, there's four of them, which have the marina in front of their property. By the way, the marina has been there for many, many decades, prior to the houses even being there. This represents, and I realize it's hard to see, the next slide, I will zoom in on it, but this represents the modified plan that all parties agree to. It's been carefully thought out by both the applicant and commented on by the appellant, and everyone agrees. I will zoom in on the focus of the marina, which is the left-hand side, particularly the three houses up on the top of the screen, which you can see their property lines, just short lines at the very top, and then one of the applicants to the, one of the appellant's, pardon me, to the left. The size of the slips labeled, well, I'll just say the diagonal slips, the slips that front the channel and the slips that front the backside of the marina, those are for small boats or boats in the 40-foot range on the outside. Those vessels are basically the same size, more or less, as they are in present-day configuration. So there isn't a dramatic change in the size or height of vessel than what is there today. Most importantly, however, is the addition of a camel pile. A camel pile is that figure that, I'm going to scroll my mouse over in the bottom left-hand of the illustration, which is basically four piles supporting a floating 16-inch tube, I'll call it. And that tube precludes vessels from either side from drifting, floating, navigating onto the neighbor's property, onto their water. So it's kind of like a bumper. It keeps, it keeps the boats from going their property. My next slide, in the upper right-hand corner, depicts the north side of the marina, where the large boats have now been relocated, as you can see by the orientation of P62, that means a 62-foot slip. And this drawing, which is labeled 7.2, was recently modified as of yesterday to account for a few minor changes on this north end of the marina, namely, which, namely, those changes are to widen the slips by a foot for uniformity, those five plus three slips on the end. They adjusted the ADA gangway and adjusted the pier platform. All this is somewhere in the order of 200-plus feet away from the appellant's houses. So from a practical standpoint, these minor changes that occurred yesterday are not a factor in this case.
Mr. Miller, may I just ask, do both parties accept these changes?
Yes, they do. And I might also add that this design conforms to the harbor design criteria. Also. Also, I'm going to go back, back a page and kind of near the red arrow, you'll see a green line which says pier headline, and you'll see a dashed head, dashed line which says project line. Thanks to the keen eye of one of our public members, notice that indeed those, those lines are mislabeled, and we have since addressed that subsequent, and we will address that at, at a future time. However, for the sake of the season, for this evening's action, the city council is going to make, we are requesting the city council make findings that according to Council Policy H1, the city council can make findings that, that, that the current configuration does not negatively impact navigation, adjacent property owners, or existing harbor uses. And that is, that is true. The most important component, aside from the camel pile, is that the marina is not slated, or not intended, or will not go farther than the existing marina extends out into the harbor now. And on the surface, one might look at this, if you were to look at the aerial and compare the aerial photograph to this layout, one might think that it almost is a like-for-like construction. It's not exactly like-for-like, but it does resemble the original configuration.
Mr. Miller, so just to go back to what you were just making in a clarification between the green line?
Yes.
With the pier head and the project line, could you just restate what you said?
Yes. This green line, I'm moving my mouse, so you might be able to see it, it represents the pier headline, and out here represents the project line. Indeed, the project line is meant to be where the green line is, the pier headline, and the pier headline is meant to be approximately 20 feet landward of that, approximately where my mouse is right now. Council Policy says that, that docks and marinas may not extend past the pier headline unless certain findings are made. And those findings are what I mentioned, and those are mentioned in the updated resolution, which, which I believe you have in front of you this evening. It was just updated moments ago.
Okay, all right, well, we could continue that. That's really a significant change.
On, on the contrary, I might add that it wouldn't be a significant change because the proposed marina goes no further out than the existing marina. Everything is uniform as it is today and, and as it is along the docks, all along Bay Shore Drive.
All right, but isn't the Harbor Commission currently looking at projects that are new that keep projects within the pier headline?
Yes, the Harbor Commission is looking at that, and for projects that are previously unpermitted, that's, that's where it's become an issue of late. And I suspect that the Harbor Commission will be further reviewing Council Policy H1, or at least recommending to council to, to review that in 2018.
All right, I'll defer this to further, future questions later. Okay, please proceed.
That pretty much sums up my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem?
Yeah, actually, following up on the mayor's point, I recall when we were doing, when the Harbor Commission revised H1 last year, the issue was the unpermitted docks. This one's permitted, and so the, the only, the issue here is really just where the line placement is, and that was one, that was one of the reasons why H1 was created in the first place, was for council to be able to make these kinds of determinations, right?
You're correct.
All right, and then, since we're, since we've been modifying a little bit at the, to make sure that both parties are, are okay with where we are, Mr. City Attorney, have you had a chance to take a look at the modified resolution? Is there anything that needs to be, do we need to add anything, subtract anything to make sure if we pass this that this does not come back?
I appreciate that. And sorry for those late-breaking changes, but we added, in the resolution you have in front of you, added Section 4, which makes the findings that Chris Miller was just talking about in order to approve the project. In Section 3, it references the pier headline as far as the revised plan goes, it should also reference the project line. And then I think it'd be good to add a provision that basically says, you know, when those new, when a seven, I guess, 7.3 is submitted, that a copy of that is provided to the appellant. I know that they'd appreciate that. So adding project line to Section 3, and then requiring that a copy of the plan, once modified, be given to the appellant's.
So how would you suggest we do that on, create a subsection E under Section 3?
So what I'd added in is, I would say, in the first sentence on the third line of Section 3, it says, "Projects set forth and Exhibit B, the revised reflect the appropriate pier headline, project line." So you'd be adding the word "project line" and "subject to any special conditions required by the Public Works Director." So it's just adding that word "project line," or those two words in there.
After pier headline, after line, the first line?
Yes.
Project line, pier headline, project line?
So pier headline, comma, project line.
All right.
And then, "The Public Works Director shall provide a copy of the revised plan to the appellant's."
Where does that go?
And that would just go right after that sentence.
So insert that sentence. Okay, all right. I have no further questions.
Okay, any other questions up here? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I make one additional comment, please? As you see in this drawing, it does not include any piles. Piles are important, piles are an important part of a dock component. That, that requires engineering, which has not yet begun on this latest design that was resubmitted recently. Engineering will take a few weeks to do that. So the, both the applicant and the appellant understand that that detail still exists. That won't change the configuration at all. It just will dictate that there's X amount of 18-inch piles, X amount of 14-inch piles, and so on. It's, it's part of marina construction. So that will be on this, on this forthcoming version that the city attorney just mentioned, that we will certainly give a copy of that to the, both parties.
Okay. Are the appellant and the applicant, are they in council chambers?
They are.
Would they like to speak?
I think they would.
All right, please come forward. Whoever wants to speak first.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, members of the council. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, representing the appellant's Kevin Moriarty, Glenn Walcott, Zach Fisher, and Teresa Cagney Morrison. Since February, we have been working with Sean Matzler on a compromise plan for the marina. There have been a lot of give and take that have gone into the plan, and we greatly appreciate the modifications on the issues that were of greatest concern to the appellant's. While it may not be perfect, we support the compromise plan. Since Mr. Miller has noted that the plan will continue to be revised to reflect the location and quantity of piles, and to accurately depict the pier headline and project line, we would request notice of that, and that I believe will be incorporated into the resolution, which we appreciate. We would like to thank the council for their careful consideration of this appeal, and we would urge you to approve the compromise plan. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. And the applicant, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. My name is Mike Hewitt. Also present are the owners of Newport Marina, Allison Presta and Ron Presta. Newport Marina is the applicant, as you know, in this matter, and a couple of clarifications. One, the, as Mr. Miller stated, there is no engineering on this yet, so there may be minor changes, of course. We'll provide it to the appellant's so that they have notice of it. I don't anticipate any major changes, but because we don't have engineering, which is a three-to-four-week process, there will be changes, pilings added, things of that nature. Second, we anticipate submitting an AIC, which would be 7.3 as soon as possible, to Mr. Miller and to the appellant's, reflecting the change in the pier headline and the project line. And then the pilings, of course, would come after that, after the engineering. And with that said, I just want to be clear that we are going to make every effort with the regulatory agencies, including Coastal Commission, to pass this plan and get it approved. In the event we cannot, as referenced in Section 2 of the resolution, we would be resubmitting the 2018 plan or an alternative plan, but we will make every effort to do so and get that done. The next is, and... That covers everything that I have. We request that you adopt the resolution. There is one issue on the resolution. Page 3 of 7, it references alternate layout option 7-1, that should be 7-2. Easy change at the top. On page 3 of 7, the first sentence, whereas, it references 7-1 at that location.
It was just, it was just talking about 7.1, it's, which is attached Exhibit A, but it does reference 7.2 as being the modified project.
Correct. But all...
Exhibit A is 7.1.
It's attached as Exhibit A, that's...
Yeah, I don't believe there's an error there. The, basically, all they did was, is attach 7.1 as Exhibit A.
I see.
7.2 is the modified project, and it's referenced as such.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
My mistake.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Do we have any comments up here, or public comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. It's good to see the city acknowledging that this project does extend beyond the pier headline, where piers normally end, and it's extending all the way out to what is called the project line. And for those on the council who don't understand what that is, the project line delineates the, as I understand, at the edge of the federal channel, which is reserved for the federal government to be dredging. And so therefore, we want and are supposed to not have, approve anything that extends beyond that project line. The confusion about those lines, though, is I, and the fact that this extends and has extended beyond where piers normally should be ending, I do not believe the, that was brought up to the Harbor Commission when they deliberated that. So their recommendations, pro and con about this, I don't think that was a factor. I could be mistaken. And the other thing that I think is very important, we, we have people who live adjacent to this, the actual location of the marina is nobody's property or everybody's property, depending on how you look at it. It's public water that the project is on. This is going to need Coastal Commission approval, based on your approval of it, presumably. However, as you know, our, our harbor has within it areas that are administered by the city and areas that are administered by the county. And I could again be wrong, I often am. From the city's mapping, I believe this entire channel, from bulkhead to bulkhead, is county tidelands. It's administered by the county. So I have to wonder, although the Harbor Commission has liberated and our city departments have, do we have actually the authority to approve the development on county tidelands? And does the county have any say in what's going on in the county tidelands? I would like clarification about that. I hope you would too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to just make a point on that?
The, indeed, what Mr. Moser says is correct in that those are county tidelands. However, for a very long time, as long as I've been here and much longer, the county has deferred to the city to regulate dock construction and configuration and issues of that matter. Yes, indeed, the, the applicant will still need to get a county permit, but it's basically an over-the-counter permit pending, dependent upon city's approval.
Okay, Mr. O'Neil. Mayor Pro Tem?
Just wanted to say, thank you very much for working hard to find a compromise here. I know how long this process has been for everyone involved, so just wanted to say thank you. It makes the decision up here a heck of a lot easier, obviously. And actually, to that, to that point that was just raised, this is why when we're looking at a patchwork quilt in the harbor, the city needs to do absolutely everything it can, by the way, to bring it back within our jurisdiction, everything we can do to make sure that we're the ones monitoring and, and making these decisions, because at the end of the day, we're the ones that are going to be affected. Our residents are the ones affected. We're the ones that most assuredly need to be making these decisions, instead of folks in the Board of Supervisors, who, although one represents us directly, the other four do not. So just a side note. So anyway, what I will do now, instead of belaboring that point, is I'll make a motion for staff recommendation with the modifications made to the resolution by Mr. Miller that he's presented, plus the two modifications suggested by Mr. Harp.
I'll second.
And I just want to echo those comments, just to thank you to both parties, working together to come to a satisfactory conclusion, and as Mr. O'Neil's mayor, Pro Tem, said, it makes our job a little bit easier that you've worked out those differences, and we appreciate that. All right, let's vote. Oh, Mr. Muldoon, I apologize. Yes.
I just wanted to first, I see Mr. Kenny's here, thank the Harbor Commission for a lot of work they did as well. It is a good example of sometimes the commission will give us a recommendation that's very reasonable, and we only find out later that community members are upset or parties not interested. So it's a good example also that although we rely heavily on the commission, sometimes we have to overturn their decision. And I know that was an issue on the campaign trail, and I'm proud of overturning the decision in this scenario, because I think that means the process worked and both parties benefited.
All right, let's vote.
Just briefly, we actually didn't close the public hearing, so that should be part of it. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak? Okay.
All right, if a public hearing is closed, all right, let's vote.
Motion unanimously carries, 6-0.
All right, our last item, number 16, initiation of the zoning code and local coastal program amendments due to VE special flood hazard areas mapped by FEMA. Mr. Jurgis?
Before you start, I need to recuse myself due to property interests.
All right.
I had a conflict on this issue earlier, but I can vote on it, correct? As I pull cards, does that still apply?
You actually don't have, have a conflict related to this one, because it only deals with the area along the coast.
Perfect.
So no one has a conflict on this one.
Okay, thank you so much.
Except for LaLanne.
Okay, it's always somebody. All right, Mr. Jurgis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Simone Jurgis, Community Development Director. With me, I have Patrick Alfred, our Planning Manager. You know, we were before the council a couple of months ago, talking about some of the impacts of the flood zone. This specifically affects our, some of our coastal properties up on the peninsula, and we're, the new flood maps are now in place, and we understand that design and construction of some of these properties in the flood zone are very difficult, according to our current zoning code. Tonight, we just want to share with you that we need to change our zoning code, and we don't know what the regs are going to be yet, and we just want to ask you for authorization to go ahead and go back and rewrite the zoning code, so we can tweak it so it can accommodate these 166 properties. Excuse me. Patrick Alfred has a brief presentation. We've got 13 slides. If you're okay with that, we'll go ahead and with this presentation.
Sure, thank you.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, thank you, Simone, for that introduction. So basically, we're dealing with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, which just a few days ago, a new flood zone went into effect, the VE zone, which basically is a high-hazard coastal area. So basically, in this area, there is a 1 in 100 chance of it reaching the base flood limits with, every year. So it's common to do as a 100-year flood. So this is an area which FEMA has determined is, is subject to high-velocity water, including waves. The VE zone Newport Beach affects 166 properties, basically from 24th Street up to 48th Street, and the areas are shown there in yellow. And it's subject to certain FEMA design requirements. These include the use of elevated buildings, basically pilings, post piers, columns. It also requires the lowest structural member be above the base flood elevation, or BFE, which in West Newport area is 15 feet. And the finished floor elevation, where we're actually dealing with the structure itself, has to be one foot above that, so we're talking about 16 feet. So another one of the design criteria is that we have to have open foundations. So the structures must be elevated on an open foundation, and it has to be free of all obstructions.
I'm going to just break in for just a second. I just wanted to note that Kevin did have a conflict of interest, and so he's left the room. It's based on his business activities, so I apologize. I was thinking that everyone had a real property interest conflict, but he had a business interest conflict.
So we'd like to basically go over the conflicts with both our zoning code and our certified LCP that requires that this amendment be initiated. Issues involve height measurement, use of garages, accessory structures, and access to the structure. So in the case of height measurement, we typically measure height from existing grade. But with the... But with the raised elevations, we're going to consider possibly, as we do in flood hazard areas, going from a finished floor elevation, which in this case would be at 16 feet or one foot above that BFE that we identified earlier, at 15 feet. So you can see the difference between the 12-foot and the 16-foot, is what we're probably looking at in this area. So just a comparison, under existing design... Well, I shouldn't say exist anymore, because this doesn't as long a fact, but under the FEMA compliant design, you can see it would deal with taller structures in this area. And so then the question is, how are we going to measure height? Should we measure it from the raised elevation or from existing? That's one of the things that we're going to have to try to address. Other issue is parking. Zoning code and our certified LCP requires garages. However, as we indicated earlier, that the area below the BFE has to be free of obstructions. So breakaway wall elements that could be used would not present a conflict with our seismic requirements. So we believe that garages are no longer possible. Therefore, as an alternative, the zoning code and the LCP may be modified to allow for an open carport design. Accessory structures. So the question is, where do we measure this? We always, we know that the structure has to be delivered, but how do we do with other types of structures? We're talking about decks and any accessory structures like barbecues and other type of equipment. So would we allow these raised decks to go into setbacks? Normally, we require things pretty much at ground level within the setback areas, but they've been denied use of the spaces in this area, and it presents access and other issues. So we need to address that. There are also visual quality and aesthetic issues that have to be looked at, and also privacy issues. If we're going to have something developed higher than the property, then that presents all sorts of issues dealing with privacy on both parties. And then there's the issue of access to buildings. Side access, like shown here, would we allow the landing to be within the setback area? Should we look at recessed doorways? And there's also issues of building code compliance, make sure that the landing is properly fire-rated to be that close to the property lines. That's one thing that we'll have to look at. Access from the carport. Now typically, you have access from inside a garage, but if it's raised up, you've got to get up to that landing. So we have stairways, we have the landing. It'll probably conflict with parking spaces and access to those spaces. And there's also fires indicated there might be a safety issue associated. That's the primary access. So that's another thing we need to look at. And then the stairs leading up to these things. Basically, we're dealing with open risers required under the FEMA design criteria. Buildings identify potential trial safety issues with the use of open stairways in that So just to summarize, the code amendment, it needs to address how building heights are measured, whether to allow carports in this area to meet off-street parking requirements, how we deal with accessory structures in terms of height measurements and setbacks, and how do we address the primary entrance location and accessibility issues. That concludes my presentation. I'll have to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Patrick. Just to summarize what you've been doing, so you've met with the residents of this affected property. You had about 80 people at a community meeting a week or so ago?
Madam Mayor, we did not meet with those area residents at this time. The meeting that we did have was really to talk about flood insurance.
Oh, so none of these people attended? Oh, I thought this was... I apologize.
Correct, but we did notice all the property owners, so I'm not sure specifically if they did attend or not. We are having another meeting coming up on April 8th at 6:00 PM in Marina Park, specifically for these property owners and the surrounding residents, to talk about some of these design impacts that we're looking at.
Good, well, that was the meeting I was thinking about, so thank you for clarifying. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure, I know this is probably a dumb question, but have we absolutely positively proven that raising the beach slightly, not the full 16 feet, but bringing more material to the beach to make it higher, might lessen the impact of how high the house now has to be? I understand you couldn't put that much sand to completely solve the problem, but did we ever just look at maybe minimizing the height to minimize the problems you have with access and cars and so on and so forth? Because we have a lot of material in the harbor that could be pumped up onto that beach if we planned on it and wanted to accomplish that. We have to take a million cubic yards out of the bay as we speak. So I just want to make sure that, and I know views might be impacted if the beach were higher, but maybe the effect of a higher beach and the loss of the first four view might not have the same impact value-wise on the homes. And I just throw it out. Did you guys?
Thank you, Councilmember Duffield. You know, that suggestion, we have not looked at at all, as far as changing the height of the beach topography. The way we're approaching this, and we can go back and study that with regards to the beach sand, we're approaching this in twofold. One, we're coming to you to say, we think we need to do, go ahead and change the code. And the second is that we're going back and we're going to actually study these properties, 166 properties, and we're going to have a dialogue with FEMA and see if we can push these waves off the properties. Last time we did it, we did it for the entire peninsula. It was just kind of a broader approach, general approach. Now we're going to be much more surgical, focus on these properties, and see if we could re-study all these, bring the waves off the properties. But again, we don't know what our results are going to be. We're going to try and do that. We're going to have that dialogue with FEMA. But in the meantime, we can definitely explore, looking at some of that sand change and elevation change.
Mr. Avery.
So if you get someone, I'm sure this is already happening, if someone wants to tear down their beach house and build new right now, would they fall under this?
So if they want to tear down, our zoning code is stuck. They have to meet our zoning requirements, and it's not very flexible. They'd have to apply for a variance to get some of the changes, because we don't allow the carports for single-family houses. You need to have a garage. You need to be a little bit above grade. So that's the struggles that we have right now.
So right now, somebody would be, this is going to apply to whoever comes?
Yes.
And holy smokes, so it could take a while before they get their structure built.
That's correct. The only process we have technically per the code is the variance process.
Right. And then, they're in effect building a stilt home, right?
That's correct. It's not as extreme as Florida, but it is kind of that smaller version. They're on stilts now.
Right, in an area of potential liquefaction, so the foundation, these go down a lot of feet.
Very deep, 60, 70, 80 feet.
60, 70, 80 feet, these pilings.
That's correct.
I would think so, with a big, tall building like that. Amazing stuff. Thank you.
So just to follow up on that, so the cost of building is going to be significantly impacted.
I do think so. I think a taller structure adds additional cost, the foundations have to be deeper and stronger. It's definitely changing the nature of construction. Hence, we've got to change the code, and two, we've got to work with FEMA and change the flood map again.
Any other comments? Speaking of FEMA, so you had your meeting, you did have a meeting a week or so ago at Marina Park, just to let everybody know about the new FEMA. And we did, thanks to staff's good work, reduce the, I call it the peanut butter approach that FEMA was going to say, the whole city of Earth, the whole peninsula was going to be underwater. And so through the fact that we do have infrastructure, storm drains, seawalls, et cetera, to mitigate floods, so we were able to reduce the projected impact from the 100-year flood and a high tide situation. But we still have properties that are going to be now newly defined as in the flood zone, especially on the peninsula, I think excluding Babo Island, if I understand that correctly.
Right, so Babo Island, the amount of affected properties affected by the flood zone has shrunk, so maybe I would say half now of Babo Island is in a flood zone. But on the flip side, now we have a lot of properties on the peninsula that are going to be affected and be in a flood zone, including these 166 properties in front of the council.
So a lot of changes coming forward.
That's correct.
Mr. Avery, did you want to say something?
And over time, we could expect the flood zone to increase?
I think that's a good way to approach it. If you're looking at sea level rise and climate change, you can definitely see the federal government trying to expand that map more and more. And we, you know, staff and the council support, I mean, this is all thanks to the city council. You know, you push back really hard on FEMA, and we did a lot of good work, and we're able to reduce that flood maps. But you know, I think we're going to have kind of that tug-of-war going forward with all future maps and any changes by the federal government.
Right. Thank you.
You know, it occurs to me, you and I talked briefly about this, so with carport design, that's going to change architecturally some styles of that particular neighborhood. People will have to park in their carports instead of using them for storage areas, I guess. That may, a side benefit is maybe fewer cars on the street, increased parking.
Definitely possible.
Okay. All right. Any public comment on this? Please come forward.
Mayor, councilmembers, would like to thank staff for the initial analysis. This is very significant, not only for this area, but potentially for the expandability, excuse me, under the LCP framework without any public process. So things like differences in the net height, that's something that the community really needs to weigh in on, because that is something that becomes irrevocable. And it will affect, it will affect not only these property values, but it will affect other surrounding property values because of inconsistencies. And there are many other features of this and potential impacts that staff has pointed out, which, and rightly so, pointed them out. But my point being, I feel strongly this needs to go through a public process. And I do want to remind the council that under the current LCP structure, and along with an ordinance that was slid through right before the holidays and before some new council members were appointed, and you were appointed mayor, a lot of authority has been given to really just the community development directors to make decisions unilaterally about things that significantly impact land use and values in the properties without public process. So I do think also, as part of this, that ordinance that went through without scrutiny was rubber stamped, should be revisited. But I would just encourage the council and ask the council to step back and assign a public process to review this, because this is not something that should be decided unilaterally. There are a lot of aspects to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think the zoning revision is going to be entirely a public process, correct?
Correct. We're not proposing any code changes right now. We're just asking if we can go ahead and start working on the code change. We need to initiate the code change.
And then there'll be a public process.
We'll go out to the public, to the community, have community meetings, and then funnel this through. Once we do the community meetings, go to the planning commission, and then the city council will have that final decision on any code change that we propose.
So just to follow up on Mr. Duffield's comment and Mr. Avery's, I mean, is there any discretionary action that the city can take, or is this a mandate from the federal government that we must salute to?
Yeah, good point. The flood maps are in place, they're carved in stone. And we participate in that flood insurance program, and so we, and we have to adhere to making changes. You know, if we don't make the changes, we can't, we cannot make, we can't permit any projects in that area. The federal government's going to look at us and going, you know, you have a flood insurance program, but you're not adhering to your own ordinance.
Okay, so the alternative is, if we did not, if we did not, if our residents did not, if the city and our residents did not participate in the flood insurance program, meaning if there's a flood, there's no insurance, and they're on their own?
So, so, so Madam Mayor, if we don't participate in the flood insurance program, the community would have to go to the private markets for flood insurance.
Well, that's what I mean, they'd be on their own, yes.
Right, and so they'd have to go, maybe like Lloyds of London, and pay astronomical prices.
Right, that's what I meant by on their own. They'd have to go to private sources for insurance. So just to be clear, what we have done is, by following these mandates from the federal government, is that we're allowing our residents to have access to the FEMA insurance.
Correct.
Discounted rates.
It's the affordable flood insurance offered by the federal government.
Mr. Avery, you were going to make a comment?
This has been going on a long time on the East Coast of Florida, right? And the solution has been, so I imagine they've gone through this whole process in terms of figuring out the issues that we'll be working out, in terms of really coming to grips with the carports and the ultimate heights and all the rest of it. So it's just new to us.
Right, that's correct. Absolutely.
It's happening.
Yeah.
Yes, on the East Coast and in Florida, I mean, we hear about these situations all the time. Mr. Hurdman.
Just want to provide some clarification on something that was just said. And in no way am I even implying that the city should not participate in the Federal Emergency Management Insurance Program. But Lloyds of London is about a fourth of the cost of a FEMA insurance policy. Yeah, just about. The trouble is that your lenders, most of your lenders will only accept FEMA. Okay, that's where the...
For a mortgage.
Yes, exactly. That's where the problem comes in.
So hypothetically speaking, if a homeowner wanted to disregard the zoning, they can't disregard the zoning requirement once the zoning code is amended, correct?
That's correct. Right now, our zoning code currently is not flexible for these properties that have to apply for variance. And we're asking the council to go ahead and initiate a code change, and we'll go back and work on it to provide much more flexibility.
So back to my original question, there is no discretion?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. O'Neil, Mayor Protem.
I move staff recommendation.
I second it. Did we have public comment on this? Have we had public comment? Yes, we did, so thank you. It's getting late. Let's go to a vote.
Well, hang on. Okay.
No, we did not have public comment.
We did. Denise spoke and then...
You had one public comment, and then you started discussing things.
Oh, all right. Well, did you want to...
I'm your second public comment.
Okay.
So, Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. For first, I wanted to clarify, I believe the requirement to build houses on stilts has been in our building code for a long, long time. What is new is that you now have, that they were required if you were in one of these VE zones. What is new is we now have homes that are in the VE zone, and I think you reaffirmed that requirement to build houses on stilts when you did the approval of the maps a few meetings back. It was buried in there somewhere, but you weren't actually changing it. It had been there all along. I think that's perhaps important to know. I'm still a little bit fuzzy on this insurance business. It sounds to me, if I'm understanding what's being said properly, which I don't always, the city is voluntarily participating in the federal insurance program, but it sounds like the city's participation in that forces a homeowner who has no interest in buying any insurance at all still to conform to those same standards. It's not clear to me whether that's a condition of the federal insurance program, that everybody has to comply to that, or we just think it would be good for everybody to comply, so if the house is sold, it would be compliant. I'm not totally clear on that. And then from having attended the zoning administrator meetings and from what you've heard at your study sessions, there seems to be a genuine disagreement as to whether these homes are actually at risk. I would guess FEMA knows what they're talking about, but there were some houses in this exact area that were approved recently at a zoning administrator meeting before the new maps came into effect on March 21st. And coastal development permits were issued for those based on another outside expert who said there was, even with sea level rise over the next 75 years, there was no risk to these houses, which seemed kind of plausible, because there's like a wide beach there. Yet in your study sessions, we've seen pictures historically where these beaches have disappeared, eroded, and the houses have practically collapsed, once in the 1930s, once in the 1960s. So it's not implausible to me that they're at risk again in the next 100 years. But the question I have, and I should know my history better than I do, we have the wide beaches now because of the groynes and so forth that collect the sand drifting down the coast. Were those there at the time of the historic erosion that we saw the pictures of, or are we better protected now than we were then? I would be curious about that. Thank you.
Thank, Mr. Jurgis or Patrick, do you want to just clarify on, back to the discretionary comment or the mandate on FEMA?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of points that Mr. Moser brought up. Insurance, if you have a mortgage, your mortgage company is going to require you to have insurance. If you don't have a mortgage, your house is paid... If you don't have a mortgage or your house is paid off, no one's going to obligate you to obtain flood insurance, and probably a good idea to obtain flood insurance, just to protect yourself. If you build a house and you pay cash for it, and you have no mortgage on it, you still have to comply with our ordinance and raise the structure above the flood line. Everybody has to raise the structure above the flood line for new development. With at-risk versus FEMA, FEMA is very conservative. They've mapped our flood zones, they take a conservative approach. We've recognized that there are some other consultants out there that don't think that the waves really reach these properties. Hence, we are going to tackle that study ourselves and actually have that dialogue with FEMA and work together to go through the analysis, and hopefully we could just change that flood map and pull the waves off these properties. Regarding the growing question, I'm going to have Mr. Alfred go ahead and answer that question.
Yes, the historic beach erosion and flooding did occur before the established system. So those groins basically help stabilize the export of sand that normally happens seasonally and keeps it stable. And plus, there's a great deal of beach nourishment that occurs in that area, so that's helped stabilize the area considerably.
You know, I remember when you presented this original issue a couple of months ago, and you put together a very detailed chart, where you ultimately recommended a more conservative interpretation of the risk of wave action coming up to the property. There was a range, and we went with the more conservative, or I guess would say, less, thinking there'd be less risk, if I'm saying that correctly. Is that correct? I remember that.
That had to deal with sea level rise.
Yeah.
And it gets to the point where we're, what should we, at what point should we measure?
Yes.
And what should we predict? Because we mentioned there's several different factors involved in here.
And we went with the lower number.
Yes.
Yes, I remember that.
That's correct. I think the thing to point out, Mr. Moser brought up, that the previous approvals, this occurred before the FEMA maximum effect. Now, that doesn't mean we ignored the potential threat. Per our certified LCP, we had an identified potential hazard. And that is why there was site-specific studies for those properties, and it did show it had reached a different conclusion than FEMA did. As Simone has indicated, they have a very, you know, conservative, very broad approach. We had site-specific studies that showed that they were not going to be subject to coastal hazards within the economic life of the structure.
Good, Duffield.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to chime in on what the Army Corps has done over the last 20 years regarding beach replenishment for the coastline, which is nothing. And that is why our beaches are disappearing. However, I was at a meeting with Dana Rohrbacher and Michelle Steele and the Army Corps at Seal Beach, and they are going to now re-implement their program, which involves, you know, dredging up material from the ocean and putting it back on the beach and letting the erosion, the natural erosion occur, which provides, it's called a latatorial drift, this material to go down, down the coast and replenish our beaches. Well, they didn't do that for 20 years. And in 1916, they agreed to do it every year, and for some reason, the last 20 years, they just decided not to do it. So that's why you see the surf lapping up against the cliff at the Dog Beach and Huntington Beach. And as you drive down the coast, you see less and less and less beach. But what I'm encouraged with is that they have agreed to begin once again going through that process, which will replenish the beaches, and we will be one of those beaches that will be rewarded with this. How much it's going to affect us, I don't, I can't tell you, but I would say that's one element that you're not factoring in. The second one is that right now, at high tide, our lifeguard building, the water touches it. So we, this isn't something we, we're not going to lift it up and put on stilts. What we can do is replenish the beach ourselves, using the dredged material from the bay in a pipe, and start putting that material and increasing the length and the height of the beach. That we have to do regardless of this mandate from the feds. This is something we have to do, you know? So the combination of the Army Corps and ourselves, and then the staff's hard work with, working with FEMA, I think we might be able to lessen the height of these buildings. That's all I'm going to say. And if we go ahead with this vote tonight, I'm just asking, could we put in some comment that, slash, until we conclude finally that raising the beach and replenishing it will or will not have a solid impact on reducing the height of the buildings?
Is that a friendly amendment?
As long as staff understands what the direction is. I just want to, I'd like to make sure we have a clear understanding. I have no problem with it, but I want to make sure you would understand the direction being given.
Would you mind just summarizing it one more time?
So we would like to make sure that there's a, if by replenishing the beach and the effects of the new Army Corps program in combination could reduce the height of ultimately that FEMA wants these houses to be, even if it was a foot, it would be worth it. I mean, these are, this is ridiculously high. So I'm just saying a compromise should be worked on, or at least try to, because as I said, no matter what, we have to replenish our beach now.
Anyway, did you understand?
Which makes it higher.
So if I understand it correctly, basically, we initiate the code revision and at the same time continue to work with the Army Corps, I'm sorry, with FEMA to try to bring down the four-foot increase based on, based on sand replenishment issues.
Yeah.
So maybe you just add as an item C, as a separate action item?
Okay. That's a friendly amendment.
And I second that. Just to clarify, Mr. Duffy, with Army Corps, because you've been talking a lot with the Army Corps on the dredging issues, have they appropriated funds to do the sand replenishment? Is there, they're just not doing it, or what?
So upstream, yeah, we're talking about Seal Beach? Yes, that is going into effect.
Is there anything, well, I guess my question is then, is there anything we as a city need to do to aggressively ensure that that happens?
Yes, and I will continue to do that, just being involved with staff. And what we do is we meet with the county supervisors, and we meet with Army Corps, and we meet with the various agencies, and we keep pushing and pushing. Right now, Scott Cunningham on the Harbor Commission is kind of leading the charge on that. He's just the Energizer Bunny in terms of dredging and all the agencies and bringing everybody together.
So do we need a council resolution or anything, just to make sure that all those people, the agencies are working to, Army Corps sometimes has not been consistent, as we know, you just said it, for 20 years. So is there anything more we need to do?
Well, I just, like I said, I just don't want this to be a final act. I'd love to know, is there an alternative method?
So it's in this resolution, so, and I've just seconded it. I think it's clear, so staff can work that till we're emphatic.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just the first step, and it was going to be a long process, but we'll definitely keep that in mind and work on those issues.
Well, it's really important, what you said. Any other comments up here? No. All right, let's go to a vote.
Motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Madam Clerk.
Actually, before you consider motions for reconsideration, I believe we're going to read adjourn to closed session to discuss items 4, D, and E, which is public employee performance evaluation for the city attorney and city clerk, as well as conference of labor negotiators related to the city attorney, city clerk, and city manager's contracts. And then you have to come back to open session after that.
Okay, yes, we will be going into closed session for maybe 30 minutes. Okay, thank you.
There's no closed session report this evening.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by the members who voted the prevailing side.
Any motion for reconsideration? None? We adjourn. Thank you.